Seven o'clock, I'm gonna call to order the December fourteenth, twenty twenty one Wakefield Planning Board meeting to order. Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click the provided link. If you do not have a camera or a microphone on your computer, you may use the provided dial in number with the meeting ID and passcode. Please only use dial in or computer. And not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The location. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you're a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or you require other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator. William Renault, town engineer at seven eight one two four six six three zero eight. As far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will allow the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. I'm gonna take a roll call vote. Jim Hogan.
Here.
Do you know?
Here.
Megan Manassali.
Here.
William Spalding, he seems to have dropped off. So. Can you give him a minute to come back on? This is a problem with technology, so. I do ask. Anyone who wants to, we're having a public meeting, public hearing later on, we're gonna open up at seven fifteen. If you wish to speak, that the name displayed matches your your actual name, and we would prefer that you have your video on, just like we're at a real meeting, so. See you as you speak. Again, I'm gonna hold off a bit, see what happened with Bill. We can at least start with the approval of the meeting minutes without Bill. Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes from November twenty third, twenty twenty one?
Yes.
All right. Anyone any comments or additions, corrections? No, okay. I'm gonna take a roll call vote for, actually do I hear a motion to approve the November twenty third, twenty twenty one meeting minutes?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Made the motion, Jim seconded. Roll call vote. Theo.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
And Bill, I see you're back.
Yes.
You make, okay. And myself, yes, so it's unanimous to approve the meeting minutes.
And Matt, if you could make me the co-host again. My laptop died and I missed that.
Twice, you want, you want that twice in one meeting? All right, you're back in again, so. All right. Again, we have a public hearing at seven fifteen. Let's see if we can jump ahead. Aaron, you want here? See that Aaron is on here, so. I mean, I'm gonna move to a couple items not anticipated, so we can get these out of the way. One of the items we had discussed at our last meeting is the procedure for street name changes. If someone petitions to change the name of a street in in town, what's the procedure? I reached out to Tom Mullen, and he seems to recall that at one point we did have a town general bylaw for street name changes, and he believes somehow it was dropped during one of the revisions. So his recommendation is that we, that the the board put together a general bylaw, and then we bring that to town meeting. So I think it's something that we should really look into. I know we've been studying what we potentially want. In that, so I think that's something that we should take up. Most likely. We would make the planning board the authority for doing that because you need to have a public hearing during it. So we'll put this on the schedule probably early next year, so we can start working on this. We will have it on the agenda, so we can discuss it, and then we're gonna have to have this advertised for a public hearing. And then, actually, I will check on that. We probably, if we don't have to have a public hearing, we may want to have a public forum on that, just to get people's input before we bring it to town meeting, so. Yes, yes, Bill.
Well, Matt, Mr. Chair, I just have to say that our board has done an exceptional job at doing some research. Theo, Megan, and Jim have provided a lot of information that I've gone through, I've sorted it, and we're very prepared to move forward with some type of board discussion slash public meeting. My question is, should I prepare that and then distribute to the entire board? In the next, before we say a week or two before we have this public meeting?
Yeah, that that would, that would be good, then we can have some talking points, we can go through that and start to formulate what we want to see on this and start writing the language for a for a general bylaw.
Right.
I hesitant to put it on the schedule right now because I'm not sure what we have coming up, so.
Okay.
Just doing, you know. Just doing some pre-planning for that. I also reached out to him on the procedure for revising our rules and regulations. Basically, it's this same procedure that I remember from before is we have this, we have agenda items where we discuss it. We propose the changes. We then have to have a public hearing for this. Again, the public hearing is we have to advertise in the paper two weeks and a week before. Publicize the text and then, you know. Listen testimony from the public to see if they have any input on that, and then from that. What, for the simple, for for changes for the rules and regs, we just need to have a public hearing. We need to vote on it. Once we vote on it, then we send it to the town clerk and have it filed. So it's a totally simple procedure. For the A and R rules and regs, I think it would be. It will be pretty straightforward, and we only have a couple items that I had planned on looking into revising. The subdivision rules and regulations are gonna take a lot more time because we're gonna have to consult with the engineering department. But again, the former town planner had gone through and outlined the changes that somehow did not get put into the E code from our last publicized or published book. And they can share that with everyone, and we can go through, you may want to correct some of that stuff, or or just make sure it's consistent with what was last publicized, and then some items, again, waivers that come up for every subdivision that we may want to think about revising, so we don't have to have that. So most likely, most of my pipe sizes, depths of material that we can be deferred to the engineering department at their discretion to to waive that we don't have to actually have a formal waiver for that, so.
I have a quick comment on that. Is is that also the right time that we as a board could start to change how submissions work? Meaning electronic versus paper?
Yeah, so for the for the A and R, that's basically the only rules that I I had foreseen doing on that is just so. And I I see it as we go to some kind of option where depending on how we're meeting at the time and the type of project, if we would require all those paper copies, we would have them. If not, it would all be electronic, so. We just need to have a little flexibility, so when people do go to file, they know exactly what's expected of them. So even if it's an option A or B, at least they're not, oh, do I have to print all these? No one's gonna be getting them anyways. People in the industry know how much is wasted on paper that no one ever looks at, especially then the last year and a half is, you know, these requirements, you still have to print everything, and no one ever actually sees that, so it is kind of a waste. So I was hoping that we could potentially do the A and R and subdivision rules and regs at the same time, so we could have basically a joint public hearing to get them, you know, through in one publication. So I also discussed because the chair of the CONCOM had inquired about them making some changes to their procedures. Tom Mullin basically said we could only, you know. It's 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 totally in their purview of doing that, we can only assist them, we really couldn't run the show on that, so. I need to reach out to the chair and let him know that we'd be willing to, you know, help them work through it, but they need to be the ones that do all the work on that. They need to propose it, vote on it, everything, so. All right.
So. Sorry, I'm back. I have my camera off. I know engineering would like to be part of it as well, when we look at our rules and regs.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's why it's gonna take, it's it's gonna take a while, so. And we definitely want their input, so.
Did you say, did you say that you're anticipating trying to do the A and R update and then subsequently the subdivision, or I thought I heard you just say that you're, the plan is to do both concurrently?
But if if we're gonna advertise for a public hearing, it would be nice to advertise and to have them both at the same public hearing, just to basically save on costs because it does get expensive. We do need to put it in the paper record, and that is a cost that if we can, you know, save some of that, I definitely want to try to do that, so. So that was my my thought on that. All right. It is seven fifteen, so I'm going to. We open the public hearing for Stark Ave definitive subdivision plan. So Attorney Joe Mann is is with us, so. One thing I need to clear up first, I know. Jill, you had submitted some paperwork today for an extension.
Yes.
But the the second letter that was sent did not specify a timeframe.
I figured we would discuss it, but we were looking for sixty days, which would effectively give us out until February, because I believe that we'll be able to respond, get back comments from Mr. Renault, the head of engineering, address the this board's concerns, and then appear and get it taken care of within that timeframe, so I would say February. I don't know what your first meeting is in February, I have to admit.
Let's see, it's first meeting in February would be the fifteenth.
There you go, okay, so then.
I'm sorry, I take that back. It would be the eighth, it's the second, second Tuesday, so.
But wait, okay. I didn't know if you reset after the first of the year, but then that would be absolutely fine if the board were in agreement to February eighth, twenty twenty two.
Yeah, that would be fine. We still need to have a, some written document that has that, so if you could.
Do you like it to be in the form of just my request, or do you want it to be in the agreement form that the board just then authorizes you to sign? I'm used to doing the agreement form, but however, this board typically does it.
Typically, we've just a letter
Okay.
to to us and to the town clerk, so it's official, that's all it takes, so we. I don't remember or recall at all that the board voting on it, and then, so, yeah. It's really not up to the board to say to force you to close out your public, you know, close out your subdivision at this point, so it's, and the way it's set up, it's at your discretion whether you want to extend it or not. We just need to know far enough in advance, so. We're not caught that we're out of time, and we need to hastily decide this.
Oh, no, I would never do that, absolutely. I'll resend tomorrow and just put in the eighth.
Okay, sounds good. So you're gonna put in, you're gonna extend until the eighth?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Unless you want me to do it for a week after, so we have the hearing, I I mean, I'm hoping that we won't have to have the hearing in February, that was the point. But if you think that that's unlikely, then we could extend it for until February fifteenth, which would give you a week after the hearing.
Well. I guess we can discuss that. Are you gonna file with conservation?
Oh, most certainly, yes.
Okay, did you want that, is that gonna be running concurrently with this? Because if there are changes that CONCOM has, we need to incorporate that into our plans, and typically these subversions like this have run concurrently, so the plans that come out are consistent between, so that doesn't give you a lot of time to to file with CONCOM and get going on it.
Sure, I think what we were waiting to do is have our, and we can do it now, so just to give the board an understanding, we have been talking to Bill Renault because we're doing the low impact development, which is very non-traditional and requires some waivers. So we had to do some other revisions to the plans based on what Mr. Renault had commented back. So we wanted to kind of finalize that stormwater before we filed the NOI. So our anticipation is we responded to Mr. Renault's comments a couple of, maybe a week ago, a couple of weeks ago, whatever that might have been. And then the intent is for Peter Blaisdell to then sit down, have a meeting with Mr. Renault about those low impact development techniques, and then based on a couple of questions we have with the board this evening, and then once those are answered, file, so the they the the order of conditions probably will not take as long as this process. Um, so I would think we will run concurrent. Do you, I apologize for asking this question because you may not know, Aaron May, does the Conservation Commission meet twice a month as well?
I I don't know.
I can look it up, but I but Peter is that.
They do, they, I think they meet on Thursday, every other, or the second Thursday, second and fourth Thursday of the month.
Yeah, so we should be, we should be okay, so it will in fact run concurrent from this point forward because we intend to file.
Okay. All right. So I I guess you can extend until that date, but that only gives you let's see, one.
Give us two meetings in January, basically.
Two meetings in, you know, yeah, one meeting at the end of one more meeting this month in two in January, and if if the if you had a deadline of the eighth, we would have to either, and just so you know. We would decide before that date.
Oh, yeah, of course. So maybe you know what I'll do is if if you think it's gonna be sticky, I'll just, I'll extend till March first, because I can't imagine a scenario under which it takes us longer than that. And with success.
Yeah. I I just.
Agreed, I appreciate that input, though, thank you.
I I don't want to get to the point where we're up against the wall and they're constructive.
I don't either. I prefer not to, I prefer not to react like that either. I prefer to know in advance. I appreciate it.
Okay, so if you could send that letter tomorrow, then we can have that all official, so, all right.
I most certainly will. Take care right away.
All right, so you can present the new plans you have. Just so people, actually, Aaron, do you know if the plans were posted on our website? I have not checked today to see. We did get new plans last week. I had asked for them to be posted.
Yeah, I think Jen posted them. Um, yeah, they should be on our website. Can I just chime in real quick? Should be, so we meet the second and fourth week of March, so that would be the eighth or the twenty second. Should we try to think about any of those dates, just so we can have a special meeting, but we just. For the plans.
Well, I think we just need to extend it to a time, and and it's the applicant's, you know, needs to to get everything done at that between that time, so.
I think we can, and I would prefer that to quite frankly have us need to meet a timeframe and and agree that we're going to be done, so that this board can see some finality as well. And I think if we go Ms. Kikinda, until the first of March, we're anticipating wrapping up very shortly with with hopefully Mr. Renault coming back, finding the final set, filing with an order of conditions and and basically being done by February, so I don't think we need to.
Okay.
Because once you close the hearing, then you do still have a little bit of time to issue that decision, don't you? I think I have to go back and look. I always get confused between that and special permit.
Yes. So, yeah, I mean, one of the issues is we, the plans were just received on the eighth, so there hasn't been a lot, hasn't really been any time for engineering to review them, so.
No, we knew, yeah.
This is why we're, you know, I'm looking at the timeframes and it's getting down to the end, so. All right, so, just so people at home paying attention, that there, this plan set is on our website, so if you want to open those up and take a look at them, you more than welcome to do that.
And just so you, so for the public chair, Ms. Chair, it's eleven twenty four twenty one was the date for the revision date, just so they know they're looking at the right plan.
Okay.
Okay. If I may, so Jill Elmstrom Mann here on behalf of the petitioner, and here with me this evening is Peter Blaisdell, the engineer who is responsible for the design shown on the attached plans. Based on comments that we had received from this board, as well as from the engineering department and the fire department, we've reacted and responded to those comments, provided an updated list of waivers and produced a new set of plans. Essentially, some of the comments that were issued were relative to, you know, how close we were to the wetlands, which we adjusted. And then I think the board members were concerned about us not labeling the trees, so we had gone back in and actually put on the plans, the trees that we were going to save in those locations as discussed within the buffer, and then those two islands. In addition to that, we actually pared down our list of waivers. Originally, as as this board knows, we weren't really sure as to how tightly to comply with the subdivision rules and regulations, given the the exempt exempt status of these lots, not exempt from needing to provide adequate access and being subject to this board's review to ensure that, and in fact, to to comply with certain of the design elements of subdivision, but the actual subdivision process was somewhat cloudy to us. So we had included a tremendous number of waivers. Based on comments back from Mr. Renault and Mr. Blaisdell Corporation, we pared down that list and literally have remaining those waivers that are necessary because we're actually extending an existing right of way and to match what the elements are at that right of way. For example, one of the, one of the design elements is that the street must be have a fifty foot right of way. Well, that truly is impossible here because the street was adopted before you had subdivision control. And I mean, the plan was it was filed before you had subdivision control, and only shows a forty foot right of way. You know, the street that we'll be extending is a smaller width of pavement. It doesn't have as wide a width of pavement as your current standards, so we seek, you know, a waiver from that. Those are the types of waivers that did remain. Some of the elements for waivers that remained were those that were impacted by low impact development techniques versus some of the other design elements that are included in subdivision that have yet to catch up with those conservation minded measures. And other, you know, how you change concrete pipe, I know some of the engineers on the board know this, change concrete pipe to HD HPDE, and probably have the acronym wrong, and those types of things were retained, but other things with regard to the types of plans to be submitted were in fact submitted and updated. And then there were some questions about, you know, how do you do the plan as you did? Can you really relocate the road? You have that legal ability, and we provided two legal opinions relative to that. And we included legal opinions relative to how what how waivers are to be granted, and if waivers should be granted, and what authority there is to either grant or withhold those permissions. And again, that was included, and I understand, Mr. Lowry, that it was only recently included with the waiver list, and probably the board needs to digest. But one of the things we would love to be able to discuss tonight with the board, and Peter can run through the plans as well, is the fact that we did do two turning radiuses for the board, both of which were given to this board. The fire department did review and approve the turning radius for the largest fire vehicle, and those were included, and then also with regard to the list of waivers, there are a couple that I would like to specifically speak to with the board, and the reason for that are they're not engineering matters, they're truly matters that the board would either grant or not grant in its discretion. There there are the waivers relative to, do we need to put in street trees, that type of thing? And then also with regard to the sidewalk being on one side, so at this point, maybe what would be a good idea is to have Peter, Peter, if you could just run through the plan, explain to the board what the changes are, and then we can go to the waivers and discuss those as well, those those three that we want to discuss with them this evening.
As long as it's okay, Mr. Chairman.
You need to share the screen.
Okay, I think I think I can, I'll try and we'll see if I'm I'm sorry, hi, good evening, everybody. Peter Blaisdell from Williams and Spurages presenting for the applicant. Let me see if I can share this. Let's see, I think I need somebody to give me permission, so.
If I can find that on here.
You now have permission.
Okay, great.
That's why Bill is the co-host, because.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. All right. Okay, one second. Everybody see that, okay?
Yep.
Okay, and I'm kind of like Attorney Mann, or I'll just Jill from now on up, that's okay. We'd like to thank you very much for your patience. I know we're throwing a lot at you, and at first, there was a lot of information that wasn't here, and that really wasn't our intent to hold anything back from you. We just really weren't sure what to provide and what not to provide, so we've heard you at the last hearing, and we're trying to go back and rework that, so that maybe moving forward, if we get to a point where everyone's happy with this, if you have more low impact development techniques coming along in Wakefield, you might actually be able to use this as an example of what you'd like to see. So that being said, Jill did have a good conversation with Bill Renault, and he, you know, he just said, just see if you can have Peter provide as much information as you can to knock off some of these waivers and reduce that, and starting with the first page, it it came up as part of your subdivision regulations to to show all the properties within five hundred feet of the subject property, so that's essentially what we did with sheet one. We just changed the, changed the scale, added added a little bit more information of the properties surrounding us to not only this, you know, cover sheet, but also to the vicinity map, so you can get an idea of how many, how many properties we have within five hundred feet here, so that's, that's what you're seeing here. Really no other changes as far as engineering or or land surveying. And again, if I'll I'll just kind of go through these real quick, I won't be long-winded, I promise, and if you have any questions, we can certainly go back. Sheet two, pretty much the same thing, other than we just tried to follow your your nomenclature. So this would now be the property rights and dimensional standards plan, essentially the same plan you were looking at last time. But now that we've done the drainage analysis, we ended up adding some additional drain easements across the. But now that we've done the drainage analysis, we ended up adding some additional drain easements across the street. One other concern that I heard, I believe it was, uh, Mr. Chairman had mentioned last time was, you know, is there enough room down at the end? For the temporary turning radius. So we we ended up increasing the size of that turning radius a little bit, just to provide a little bit more room. But essentially, that's really all that changed on this plan. None of the boundary information changed or any of that matter.
He did though pave the cul-de-sac.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get to that one.
Okay.
I'll get to that one. I've, I've, I've got this all planned out, Joe. Okay, uh, we can, we can talk about this, uh, as you could, uh, as Jill had mentioned. We we pared down the amount of waivers that were here before. I won't even bother going through each one of them. Jill and I did submit a written list of waivers too that we can get back to if you'd like. There will be some more revisions made to this. Um, but anyways, we did pare down the sheet. And try to reduce them as much as possible.
So, Mr. Mr. Chair and Mr. Lowry, do you, would you like for us to discuss the waivers while we're on that sheet or do you want to continue?
Why don't you, why don't you do your presentation first?
So skipping ahead to the profile sheet. So one of the bigger changes that you're gonna see here is, uh, after our last hearing and hearing the concerns from the neighborhood. And talking with, uh, Mr. Green and talking with Attorney Man. It was decided that we would no longer be removing that temporary turnaround. Uh, we're gonna leave that as is. So. That would be really the major change that you would see at the end of stuff. So instead of resurfacing Stark Avenue back approximately seventy-five to eighty-five feet. We're only gonna resurface Stark Ave back about, say, ten feet or so. And leave this and leave everything in place as is.
I'm sorry, could I?
Go ahead.
Could I ask you right now? So, right now, that temporary turnaround is on, basically, it's an easement on. Someone else's property.
That's correct.
They own the fee under that. So for you to decide to leave that there, even though there is another one down the road. You're basically, at this point. Using it, and it doesn't need to be done. So you're, you're holding up them getting their property back. By the town, that's owned by the owner. So I don't know if that's an option. If you're moving the temporary turnaround. That will probably be a condition that it needs to be restored.
And that is absolutely, if the board wishes for us to do it, we absolutely do so. The reason why we pulled it off the plans is it it was such a comment from the abutters. We thought if the board would like us to, we'll remove it. We have no issue doing the work and replacing it with grass. We just didn't know what the, what the decision of the board would be. So that's fine, Mr. Lowry. Whatever would be the decision would be fine with us.
We've got so much negative feedback, uh, from the public. The last time, we just thought that it would be a no-brainer just to leave it as is. However, like you just said, if. If if it, if it, if it's the will of the board or even the engineering department. That that should go back. It's very easy for me to put back.
Alright, well, I I think. Kind of getting ahead of myself now, getting into this, but one of the issues was is that it's inadequate. For turnaround as it is now. But you're basically just reproducing it further down the road. So if it's inadequate now. And you just move it down the road four hundred feet, is it not still gonna be inadequate down there?
We expanded it. It's definitely not the same thing. We're paving it and it's larger now. Peter, you could describe it. There's a big difference in the tissue.
Well, there's gonna, there's gonna be more room to maneuver. Down at the end of the new extension than this one. I mean, it's, it's almost the same size, but ours is, the new one is gonna be a little bit bigger. But this really wasn't done more as a maneuverability issue. This was just more that. You know, we, we kind of compared notes afterwards and the, the applicant said, geez, it sounds like everybody hates the idea of removing that turnaround. Why don't we just take it off the plan? So that's, that's really the motivation for that.
What I heard more is just people hate that it, it's inadequate.
I heard the people thought that people were going to, instead of using that to turn around, they were gonna continue to turn around in their driveways. And we've actually spoken to the fire department. So what we've designed down the end is adequate. It complies with what the fire department says it wants, and it will allow trucks such as Amazon trucks. All other types of vehicles to make a turn at the base here. And if you just look at the two turnarounds, you can see the difference between what we are proposing and what had been proposed. And again, it's adequate. The fire department has actually signed off on it. But yeah, I don't debate that the abutters say that people are still turning around in the driveway. But I find it hard to believe that a driveway provides more room than this turn. In fact, I know it doesn't because I've seen the woman's driveway who's talking about it. It's just that people choose to turn in a driveway. I mean, I, I don't, and it's a problem for her and I understand. But that's going to continue no matter what we do because this particular part of the road is far beyond her home. Nobody's going to go here and turn around at her house. They're gonna turn around here. But we, I mean, we can present the turning radius plans. As well.
I'm gonna show everybody those as well.
So how much, Peter, how much bigger is this turning? Is this temporary cul-de-sac or or turning area than the one currently out there? Cause I did some measurements too. It's not much bigger, is it?
It's, it's not much bigger. No, it's, it's a little, it's a little bit of a different orientation. I mean, it's a little bit bigger, but I didn't do a comparison or anything. I I can, if you want.
So. I've, I've already looked at that too. And yeah, it's not much bigger. So, but so saying it, it's, it's a big improvement.
No, I, I guess maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding. I, we actually were under the impression that everybody wanted that tur- that cul-de-sac to stay as is. If, if we're incorrect.
Everybody's getting this, we, the, the cul-de-sac at the end of the road, when originally proposed, was going to be almost identical to what was there. Because that's what was there and that was obviously deemed adequate and sufficient because that's what was used before. We had said we would remove the old one because if we were gonna put in the same thing. Then we actually listened to some of the comments from this board, paved it, which is different from what's provided. It is enlarged. It does have a different orientation and we did get sign, sign off from fire department. So we don't have anecdotal comments relative to the safety inadequacy of the turnaround. But actually have the fire department saying it's, it's safe and it's adequate and provide sufficient turning radius. And then also provided turning radii documentation. So whether or not that other cul-de-sac is adequate. Um, I would venture to say it still is. But ours is an improvement and even if it's a little bigger, it's bigger. And it does accommodate the trucks necessary. And it's at the very end of a road. So if you have to back up, you can, as you could in the other one. So I mean, I would venture to say that when that cul-de-sac was put in, in whatever year it was, it was adequate.
Nineteen fifty, in the, in the fifties.
So it was adequate.
There, there were no, there, just to be fair, there were no design standards back then. They just put in something that they thought would work. It, it's not like they're, they were meeting some actual. Turning radiuses that we have nowadays.
And we, but we've met them. So I, I don't disagree that maybe back then, but it. It was intended to be able.
If, if I, if I could, hang on a second. It, it sounds like the board would like to talk about it some more about going back to the other design. That, that, that's fine. I mean, we could, we could certainly go back to, I don't recall even hearing from this person. Maybe I'm mistaken, but the person that actually lives here, I don't even recall them speaking about this. I heard everybody around speaking about it. So I don't know if our applicant's been in, in contact with them or not, but we could certainly ask them.
Which, you mean, the person that, that owns the fee where, where the current turnaround is?
Right. The, the person that actually lives here, I don't, I don't know that I've ever even heard them speak up as to whether or not they would like it removed or remain. I mean.
Well, by definition, it's temporary. Um, so you would be making it permanent if you, if you didn't remove. If you extended the road and didn't remove it, correct?
No, I mean, I think it would be temporary unless the person who owned it wanted it gone. If they told us we couldn't remove it and they didn't want it removed, I don't think any of us could remove it.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, Mr. Chairman. I don't know. I mean, te- temporary from nineteen fifty-eight to now is quite a long temporary. I, I don't know.
Alright.
But anyways, we can certainly discuss it more. Uh, I'd love, I'd love to hear what the board thinks. But anyways, moving on, we, um, we showed, um, the sidewalk, uh, on the north side of the. Of the roadway, uh, coming to, uh, an end here and tying in here. There is a sidewalk back here. However, that does not continue across here, but just based on. Normal low-impact development techniques, which we talked about before. I mean, I, uh, I believe it was Mr. Spalding, I'm not sure who on the board, correct me if I'm wrong, had asked if we could. Supply some examples of low-impact development projects that we've worked on. I believe I emailed them to Aaron. I'm not sure if she, she gave them to you. But, uh, typically with the low-impact developments that we've had approved, there's, uh, there's no sidewalk at all. However, it certainly does seem feasible that we should have sidewalk at least on one side here. So that's, that's why we ended up just going with, um, the north side. It also leaves us more room to have more drainage on the south side. The only other thing you'll notice here is that we've, we've added a complete drainage design, uh, to both sides, showing where that's gonna be. A, a full stormwater report was generated, um, emailed to Mr. Renault and Aaron. And a paper copy dropped off as well. So it's a, it's, it's a four hundred-page document. So it's gonna take him a little, little time to go through it and hopefully as soon as he gets a chance to digest it, we'll, we'll go back through it with him. Here, let me just, uh, let's say I'll skip ahead. This is, this is a, a new plan to the set. Um, it was asked at the last hearing, could we provide this? And the answer is absolutely. So this would be the existing conditions and demolition plan. So this essentially is just showing what's on the ground there now. These are the trees that, um, our, our client went out and he. Essentially located all the trees that were twelve inches in caliber or greater. Uh, so those are the ones that we located. We also added some additional topographic information down here at the up gradient. Uh, end of the culvert, just so we can kind of fill in some of these grades, just to make sure that when we do construct along here, we'll be able to match the existing grades. So essentially, again, the same, same plan, we've just stripped away the, um, proposed features. So it's a little more readable. So you could see what, so it looks up in the ground now.
Peter, can I ask you, since you're on this land, you said the client located the trees or did, did this?
Oh, no, we, uh, he was, he was, um, he was out there with our survey crew. So he was, he was putting flagging around the trees as we were locating them. It took us a couple tries. Apparently he had gone out a couple days beforehand, had tied some ribbons around some trees. And when he came out, they'd all been taken down. So he had, he came out with us this time to make sure that as he was, as he was measuring them, we could locate them.
So you, you, you haven't located all the trees on, on the site, correct?
So these are, um, these are all the trees. That we agreed to, we're gonna be in those safe areas. So it's not every tree on the site, no.
Alright, so you're still looking for the waiver for locating all the trees on the site, correct?
We would still, we would still be looking for that waiver, yeah. And if, I, I believe it's on the waivers list. If it's not there, I, I will make sure it's back on there. But this was just the result of our, um, discussion last time.
So all the trees that are currently in the right-of-way that will be being cut down and on the lot, close to the wetlands, are not shown.
Right, right. Um, I, I checked my notes from the last time. I know we went, uh, back and forth a couple times with. Uh, what we were gonna do, an attorney man said, you know, it doesn't really make much sense if we're gonna, you know, essentially clear all the lots anyways. So let's, let's locate the trees in the areas that we're trying to save. So you can get an idea of how many trees we're gonna try to save in these areas. We're not, we're not touching any trees, uh, at all, you know, outside this twenty-five-foot buffer zone. So essentially any tree in, you know, right now, there's an existing sewer line running through here. Uh, so essentially anything that falls within this area is gonna be cleared. But outside of this line is gonna be saved. All of the treatment, we'll get to another, it'll be easier in a minute. Uh, I wanna get to the grading plan. Hold on one second. This was another plan that we added. Um, we had a waiver request on this before. So this is the site construction plan. I couldn't really find a good example of what it's looking for, other than this would just be kind of a stripped-down version. And I, I apologize, I, I did not freeze these contours. So sorry about that. I'll, I'll fix it next time. But this essentially shows where the proposed dwellings go, uh, the setback distances, just where the road goes. And just gives you an idea of what the plan looks like, you know, just, uh, without any, without any contours of spot grades on it. Or, or anything like that. So this is just kind of a stripped-down version of the, of this, of the dwellings and the roadway that's gonna be constructed. I said, so I'll try to move a little faster. Um, so this, this is the, this is the plan that has a lot going on, obviously. So this shows all of the grading that's gonna be happening on the site. It's quite a bit. Mr. Chairman, just, just to let you know, these, these are the trees that fall here inside that area that we're trying to save. Now, there's a few trees that obviously fall right on the area that we're trying to save, that type of thing. You know, some of those trees, you know, we may be able to save as well by just adding some tree wells or adjusting the, the no disturb area, that type of thing. It all depends on the, um, you know, the, the final design. But I think, you know, we're gonna be able to save a fairly significant amount of trees around this perimeter. The trees that are in the front, you can see that a lot of these trees, I think, other than the ones that fall inside the driveway or right on the wall. They'll probably be able to be saved as well. Um, if we have to realign a walkway or go between some trees, that type of thing. But obviously, this tree is gonna be gone. It's right, right in the layout. But, um, it does look like in those areas that we're hoping to save and preserve some trees for some buffer. That we will be able to, you know, save a, a fairly significant amount of them. We're, we're hoping. This is, uh, another plan that we added. Essentially, this is the erosion, the sedimentation control plan. I know a couple of the neighbors were, uh, concerned about this and they should be. So some of the features that we're putting on here would be, um, these silt sacks. We would be installing silt sacks in the existing catch basins to make sure that anything that we track off the property doesn't end up in the drainage. And then in the, uh, in the, in the wetlands. We added a, just a very simple de-watering detail, if that's needed, either for the roadway or for, uh, you know, during house construction. If they need to pump out, um, the excavated hole. Just, uh, you know, we always like to make sure that the contractor has a, a good supply of temporary hay bales on site in case something happens, needs to be shorn up. The tracking pad is very simple. You, you've probably seen them all around, um, on sites and developments. About a six-inch thick pad of crushed stone, about twenty-four feet by fifty feet long, just so that the, the, um, sediment can be taken off of the truck tires. Before they get back out on Stark Avenue. The, the main erosion control for the site, um, we've used this, um, on a few sites that we've actually had approved. By the Wakefield Conservation Commission. They like this, uh, silt fence with mulch sock, mulch sock detail, excuse me. Beyond that, we're just getting into some of the construction details. A lot of these, I'm just gonna end up going over with, uh, with Mr. Renault. We updated the cross-section of the roadway, which is why we're asking for that, uh, waiver of that. Because you, you need to ask for a lot of waivers for the, uh, typical cross-section of Wakefield. Um, in order to do this, obviously, you know, we're not gonna have, uh, curbs. If we can't put, uh, street trees right inside the drains. Deep some catch basins, uh, all, all that type of thing. So that's one of the things we wanna go over with Mr. Renault and obviously with the board as well. Uh, and lastly. This is just a detail showing the roof recharge chambers that we're gonna be using to try to spread some of the roof recharge runoff around the site. Again, standard, standard plastic details. You can, you can buy them, uh, in Wakefield and Middleton, that type of thing. They're used all over the place. One of the things that, uh, Attorney Man did mention a little while ago, uh, was at the last hearing. She had mentioned, um, you know, what's the, what's the biggest, what's the biggest vehicle that you can just drive down this road? And just completely turn around without having to do a, a three-point turn. So essentially what we came up with is just about any passenger vehicle. Up to and including, um, a twenty-four-foot, uh, ambulance can drive down this road. Just do one turnaround and then head, head back out the same way.
Do you think you're showing something on your screen?
Oh, did it? I'm sorry. Hang on, you know what?
We're all looking at Gray, so I'm figuring, yeah.
Sorry, I got the wrong one. Uh, I'm sorry about that, everybody. Here, how's that?
There you go, now they know.
So I'm sorry to waste everybody's time there. So to repeat what I said, as as Attorney Man had mentioned last time, we ran an analysis auto turn to see how big of a vehicle we could just go down and turn around without having to do a three-point. So essentially, just about any passenger vehicle up to the size of a twenty-four foot ambulance could drive down and just in one motion turn around and then head back out the way they came. I will, let me just, let me just share again, and I'm gonna show you the fire truck, I think you saw it last time, but we'll just go over it again. Okay. Everybody see that one too?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, you actually made a a good comment last time, you were a little concerned that when that, when the truck backed up or it swung, I think you were, you said you were a little concerned that the front end of that might actually be getting a little close to that sidewalk, so I thought that was a good suggestion, so what we ended up doing was increasing the size of that radius and pushing that wall back a little bit, so. And again, this truck, this is the Wilmington Fire Fighting Apparatus, which according to Wakefield Fire Department is about two feet longer than the one that Wakefield has. So I asked them if that was okay to do a simulation with this, and they said if it's a little bit bigger, that's fine with us. So essentially, same thing, the the fire truck can come down, front wheels would stop just at the edge of the pavement, can back up and then come back out in one three turn, and as you can see, this would be where the front of the vehicle would be, so we're trying to get it so that the front of the truck would not swing over as far as the sidewalk or the wall, which I believe was Mr. Chairman's comment last time. So I I think as Attorney Man had mentioned, we sent this along to the fire department. The chief did get back to us, he said he was, he was comfortable with that. So that, that being said, this is just kind of an overview of what's going on, I I have not sat down with Mr. Renault about this yet, so, you know, could he be making some changes to the drainage, that type of thing, absolutely. I believe, I believe it was Mr. Spalding did ask me about to send along some low impact development examples. I don't know if you saw those, Mr. Spalding?
I I did, I don't recall seeing them, I think it might have been Jim that Mr. Hogan asked for them, I I could be wrong.
If it was, that's okay.
I did share with all them, I did share.
I figured you did, Aaron, I I don't, I'm not even gonna go through them, but I'll just tell you kind of what what they are. One of them is an example of a a single family residential subdivision in Middleton. Very, it again, we don't really have a project that's exactly like this, you know, the extension of an existing way. But we have a couple of projects that are, you can kind of get an idea of what's going on, that you know, all the catch basins have been eliminated. Water quality sediments, that type of thing, everything discharges to the side of the road and gets captured in in either drainage ditches or rain gardens, that type of things, there's a lot of different there's a lot of different ways you can capture and treat runoff. So I I believe maybe it was Mr. Spalding again, hadn't started to put you on the, on the, on the, on the spot, I did try to find a couple of guidelines for some low impact development, I had a couple from some seminars that I'd taken, but unfortunately, I I had kind of marked them up a little bit, and they weren't really clean. I I certainly would be willing to scan them in and send them to you if you want, but it just didn't look like anything I'd want to put like on the public, public record, but if you do, you know, just search for low impact development and the advantages of low impact development over traditional subdivisions in Massachusetts, you will, you will find some information that you can look up yourself and not have to listen to it from me. You know, low impact development, I guess what I would say is starting to become a little more prevalent. We're certainly seeing it in towns like the one that we got approved on Essex Street in Middleton was recent. West Newbury, we just got one approved, because that that's what they're looking for. Georgetown, Rowley. We just got, there's actually one under construction right now, I wouldn't compare it with this one, but there's a large low impact development over fifty-five community being built right now behind Angelica's Restaurant. That same thing, there isn't a catch basin or curb on the place. Everything is, everything is discharged to what you would call country drainage and then handled that way without pipes, so. I think that's all I have, if I spoke too long, I apologize, but I just wanted to kind of go over everything with you, and if you have any questions, please let me know, and I'll, I don't have the answer now, I'll certainly get back to you with it.
Alright, thank you, Peter. I did take a look at those examples you gave, and for the most part, though, they're they're all small cul-de-sacs with just a few houses on them, correct?
Yes, the one I did in Georgetown, I think was three lots. Which is same as this, is a three-loter, the one in West Newbury, I believe, was three or four lots.
I can send along in Rowley, forty-nine lots, five thousand feet of road, I can send that along, I thought you wanted smaller ones, but we
Yeah, Essex, Essex Street. One second, I can tell you, one, one second, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, because the one in in Middleton, I know, is eight, the one behind Angelica's is forty-five.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's one of the largest low impact developments I've I've seen.
Mr. Lowery, would you like us to share, like, the more, the larger subdivisions?
Well, one of my, one, one thing I saw, this is gonna be handling a lot more traffic that basically is coming up, turning around and heading back down, where the other ones are basically a few a few trips per day, maybe, of a truck, whereas this especially the last couple weeks, I'm sure they have had probably dozens of trucks on this street, because I know in my street deliveries get, happen about every other hour, it seems like. So there's a lot of traffic going down here. I do know that I I believe most of the other ones that are provided, they did have a wider pavement area on them than this, this is, you're matching what's out there, so it's twenty-four foot wide, so it's actually narrower than most of the ones you, examples you provided. So that's one of my concerns, my, you know, the fact that the shoulder of the road is, is a drainage ditch is troubling to me because there's really nothing to prevent a truck from going up there in the winter and sliding off and into a drainage ditch.
Well, I I I do agree with you, just bear in mind, this this drainage ditch is literally a foot deep. It's, we're not talking about someone falling into a chasm. If you've, if you've, if you've driven in Maine and New Hampshire, this is their, you know, primary way of handling the stormwater runoff, and as a matter of fact, I I think they do it better than we do, because they actually keep it up. You don't have broken pipes, you don't have broken catch basins, you don't have all the control structures that clog and get failed. It it's, it's a different type of development, I I think they work great when when installed properly. You know, I do, I do see your concerns, and I do understand that this is something that, you know, we seem to be kind of, you know, fusing some newer technology onto an older road. But I, you gotta remember, this is, you know, this is the way things are being done, we've, we've tried to realign that road to move that house away as far as possible to to, you know, keep our activity as far away from the conservation commission's twenty-five foot guideline as possible. You know, the the alternative to to this type of technique would be that we just, you know, put in curbing and catch basins, and, you know, we have to pick up the road quite a bit, because as you know, the distance between, you know, catch basin rims and pipes out have to have a certain distance. So you're usually talking about more earthwork and more fill and more, more disturbance to try to create drainage areas, whereas the nice part about the low impact developments is that you're, you're essentially using the project as a drainage area, and you're spreading the, you're spreading the runoff all over the site as opposed to concentrating it in a one area. So, you know, based on the space requirements and the, and the lack of it, and the proximity of the wetlands, you know, it, this, this does seem like it's a good use of this type of development here at this spot. Now, we'll have to see, our, our, our goal here was to make sure that it met all the ten standards of the DEP Stormwater Management, we did that. I still have to go over it with the, with the town engineer, however, I'm confident that once we sit down with him and go through it, if he has some changes we have to make, that's fine. I'm hoping he's gonna recommend that we, he grants the waivers, and then once we get that, we can file with the Conservation Commission, so that's, that's, that's how we're, we're hoping to get this through both boards.
And that's kind of the issue, is is we do need to know if the low impact development technique is, is one that is appreciated and and approved basically by engineering in this board, because we can't file, we really can't file with CONCOM unless we know how we're gonna handle storm. And this is the most appropriate conservation minded way. I mean, structures are not conservation minded, nor are traditional techniques for handling storm. The best way is low impact development, so we thought that that would be best. Considering that we're only extending by three homes, while I understand, you know, we're moving the cul-de-sac to the end, but the consternation relative to the neighbors is not that people even use the cul-de-sac, but rather the trucks turn in the driveways to which they're servicing, and maybe that's the case, maybe it's not. I don't know, but the cul-de-sac will be able to handle them. And and, you know, I mean, as far as trucks sliding off the side, anything is possible, I mean, Lord knows, anything's possible. But you you would hope that they would be able to maintain, you know, their trucks in control and drive on that pavement. So I mean, that is something we would like to hear from each of the board members, how you feel about low impact development, because that obviously is a a key element of our plan, I mean, you know, existing Stark Avenue, I understand, are structures, I mean, it's a thirteen-hundred foot road, twenty-four feet of pavement, forty foot right away, it serves eighty, thirty-two homes. You know, we're gonna extend by four hundred feet, a little bit better than that, and we're gonna service three homes. So I I don't know, I I hear what Mr. Lowery's saying, I mean, how do people feel about low impact development, I mean, do you see the benefits? Or do you just simply want to wait to see what Mr. Renault will actually recommend to the board? Because it's possible he'll dislike something and we have to make a material change, it's possible to love what we do, and then we'll be back again to discuss it, but if there's something this board and its members would like to add, we'd love to be able to bring it to them.
Well, I I've, I've been pretty clear on this, is that up until this point, we we've tried to have an open mind with this.
Yep.
But we were relying on our engineering department to review this and and give us some guidance on it.
Absolutely.
They have not been able to do that, because they just got the drainage report. So we're, we're basically at the end of what's required timeframe to review this, and we're just getting the materials that the engineering department needs in order to advise us on whether this is the right, right direction to go in or not.
Oh, we, I mean, we realized it took a while to get the stormwater, I mean, I, there's no doubt about that. We hadn't had it prepared before we filed. You know, and I understand we had to seek continuance. But that is not, I I have to be honest with you, in all the subdivisions I've ever done, I almost never have ever complied or met with that initial time, I always have to give extensions, because quite frankly, it's tough sometimes to design sites and takes a lot of work, but I I respect the fact that the board has not received an opinion from Mr. Renault, and that's why I simply say if there's something you would like addressed, you know, we're more than willing to bring it up to him, and we know that you need to wait for his review, because he's going to go through each page of that, Mr. Hogan's raising his hand.
I, I, I see.
Oh, you can see it, okay.
Yeah, so one of, one of my concerns is now that the changes were you deciding to keep that cul-de-sac, and and the one you're proposing, while even though the fire chief is fine with being able to turn the fire truck around up there, it's this board who wants to decide whether it's a benefit to the public or not. Whether it complies with our regulations or not.
I agree.
One of the issues we, that we have heard is that there's a problem with vehicles, specifically trucks, turning around on this street. In order to do that, they have to turn around in people's driveways sometimes, which, which is not fair to people. So by extending this road further, for me, I would want to see a benefit to the neighborhood for doing this, which meaning, making it easier for trucks to turn around. That would be one of my, one of the big issues for me. So is it possible for a garbage truck to turn around there, or is it need to do, still do a three-point turn?
I think, Peter.
I, if it's, if it's bigger than twenty-four feet long, it's gonna have to do a three-point turn. If it's less than twenty-four feet long, it can turn around.
So it's gonna do the same thing this potentially, it's doing now, is that correct, or, because it's not turning around there now?
I, I don't know, I I haven't gone down there to watch a garbage truck, so.
Alright.
And I'm not saying that to be smart, I'm just, I'm, I'm letting you know, I I don't know.
I mean, I, I think that I understand the board's you know, desire to make it better, but it's also, these particular lots are located on a street that was designed a long time ago, and and we didn't make the decision to not remove that existing cul-de-sac. We heard concerns, so we simply said, okay, we're not gonna force the removal. It's up to the board whether or not it wants it removed, that's, that is your jurisdiction, and we respect that. We'll do either one, so it's not our decision, it's yours, quite frankly, because we can't force it. But with regard to the new cul-de-sac, it is better than the old cul-de-sac, it will be paved, which was a concern of this board. It is a bit bigger, and the the concerns are that people didn't want to turn around in the cul-de-sac, that they want to turn around in the driveway. And I mean, that's a concern, I, on any street you live in, Amazon trucks turn around in your driveway, whether you're getting a delivery or not. As far as garbage trucks, you know, if the garbage truck picks up everybody, it's going all the way down, and it's not gonna turn in somebody's driveway down the way, because they have to go all the way to the end of the route. So no matter what, the garbage truck's coming all the way down, whether they have to make a three-point turn or a four-point turn, they're going to do it, and they're gonna do it in front of these people's homes that are new to the street, not an old to the street, because they have to service everybody, so I think it'll address your concern.
Alright. So I know, Jim, you had your hand up, you wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, I wanted, I I went through, and in fairness, not thoroughly, because it's four hundred pages, but in the stormwater report through the, one of the peak rates, specifically as it relates to the existing twenty-four inch culvert, it it showed that there was a a net increase from the flows from the baseline condition to the, to the new, new proposed condition. Can you, can you walk through or kind of explain what, what that that increase is, is and where it's draining to, you know, I think one of the things that we heard from the abutters was a concern as it relates to you know, overflows from some of the runoff from the site in the existing condition and potential, you know, soggy basements, for lack of a better term. And so seeing that there's a a location where there may be an increased runoff, just trying to want to understand where that would potentially occur just to to understand, you know, what my, my opinion of the the concept, you know, in general, you know, I think Attorney Man, you were mentioning as it relates to low impact development, with the obvious caveat that, you know, I'm gonna wait until Bill Renault, from the town engineer, says something. You know, I I think it's something that if he, if he's on board with it, I I think I see, I see some merit associated with decentralizing and not collecting all the stormwater in specific locations, with the caveat being that we're not overflowing water onto adjacent sites.
So, Mr. Chairman, as long as I can address Mr. Hogan, so Mr. Mr. Hogan, this, there's three peak rate of runoff tables, the first table is the total runoff from the limit of the watershed analysis, so that's everything that's studied, and that actually shows us a slight decrease. So essentially, everything that heads, you know, towards Molly Circle and then heads out eventually, I think it heads out to the Mill River, we're showing a slight decrease in that. The wetlands right now get runoff from all the way up to the top of the hill. And then this, so that has a rate, however, with the new development, as if any road that that flow is not gonna be able to to flow straight down the hill and then over the road anymore, and then go right to the wetlands, instead, we're gonna lengthen that time of travel, run it around behind the houses, and then that what that will do is go to the upstream end of the culvert. So we're actually decreasing the amount of flow that superficially heads towards the wetlands down by Molly Circle. That superficially heads towards the wetlands down by Molly Circle. Um, but we have to pick up that runoff and we bring it around to the upstream end of the culvert. So we're actually. Increasing the amount of runoff that heads to the mouth of the culvert. But we're decreasing the amount of runoff that heads directly to the wetlands overland.
And Mr. Blaisdell, can, can you, can you, you know, is it possible? Can you just pull the plan and show? Sure. Conceptually, I think I know exactly what you're talking about, but it's on like.
As long as it's okay with Mr. With Mr. Chairman, hang on one second.
Yep, go ahead.
Alright.
Cause you're discussing that you're basically the, the runoff from the, on the south of the plan is collating and, and collecting to the west. And it travels underneath the existing way via that culvert. But because of the low impact and the, the drainage and, and the retention ponds, you're actually not going to have as much runoff. Drain off under the wetlands under the north of the site? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I couldn't even said it any better. So hang on one second, let me just share the screen. And alright, one second. Alright, hold on one second. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Hogan, kind of like what you were just saying, uh, so this is the existing condition right now that's out in the field. Uh, so right now, all the way back at this high point. You get about a hundred and twelve thousand square feet of, uh, runoff that heads right down towards this wetland area here. And you've got about a hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet of runoff that heads to that culvert here. Um, Stark Avenue doesn't change. Uh, this, this area here goes all the way back to Lancaster Road. So all of this runoff doesn't change, this doesn't change. What we're really is going to change are these two subcatchments. So.
Peter, are you pointing to something? Cause we can't see.
Still can't see, I'm sorry. One second.
We can, we can see the plan, we can't see your pointer.
Okay, so you can see the plan, just can't see the pointer?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Now we can.
Alright, sorry, you can see the little hand moving?
Yeah, now, yep.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, alright, so this is the existing condition. And now I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna switch over to proposed condition and what Mr. Hogan just said is, is, um. Exactly true. Can you see this now, the proposed condition? Okay, so what, what you'll see now, Mr. Hogan is, if you recall that other subcatchment. That runoff went all the way back up to this hill. That, that area that was directly tributary to that wetland, um. Went from about a hundred and twelve thousand square feet down to thirty-seven thousand square feet. So everything here before that was heading right to the wetlands is now going to get intercepted and either infiltrated. Or is going to get runoff over to the head wall. So essentially. All of the drops of water that would hit here. Are just being kind of shuffled around a little bit. So we're still having a net decrease of all the runoff that would actually flow in this direction. We're just moving it around. This is decreasing, but this area is increasing. It's a twenty-four inch culvert, so it's designed to take quite a lot of flow. So. Essentially, even though we're increasing runoff here, essentially we're just storing more runoff in this low area here. It'll raise the water surface by about five to six inches. But that's still below the edge of the bordering vegetated wetland. So there's plenty of storage here that's available. Now, I do have to, I do have to do exactly what you just said and, and, and. Bring that to Mr. Renault's attention and let him know that's okay. But our ultimate goal is to decrease the amount of runoff. That hits this downstream point of comparison, which is here, because from here, then the runoff starts heading this way. Um, I believe out towards Nahad Street, it's kind of convoluted where it goes.
And the mech, and the mechanism for reducing that overall, uh, flow into the adjacent wetland. Is essentially these detention ponds and then the incre, or the in, infiltration, uh. Strategies that are being employed by the project.
E- exactly. And the same thing would happen even if we were doing a traditional subdivision, Mr. Hogan, because we would probably have a pair of catch basins here and here. And then that would bring that back and discharge it to a pond here. Same thing, there'd be a catch basin here and here and everything would discharge here. So. That is a, a big concern that neighbors always have and, and let's be honest, everybody always says the same thing. Are you going to cause more runoff onto my property? These properties are all much higher. The, the water level down here would actually, I don't think is going to see any, any change at all, because we're actually going to be backing the runoff a little bit more over here at this culvert. So, um. It is a concern. I do have to talk to Mr. Renault about it. It still meets the, um, intent of the policy because. This is really what we're concerned about it, which is how much runoff is leaving this line here.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. That, that helps and addresses what I was, what I was wanting to understand better.
No, I appreciate it. You gave me some practice to talk to Mr. Renault about it, so.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I have a quick question, um, about the retaining walls and the heights.
Sure.
Um, I don't want to be jumping ahead too far, but I know this is part of the plan. And it looks like the highest part of the retaining wall is about ten feet on the southern side where it splits between the two houses.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Can you explain a little bit more about the retaining wall and if there is going to be? I, I, is that on private property or is that part of a public way?
Uh, the retaining wall, uh, right along the roadway?
Well, it looks like it's about two or three feet as it comes along the roadway and then goes up to six feet and then ten feet. As it turns back towards the houses, is that correct?
Uh, hold on one second, let me just see if I can narrow down what you're, what you're talking about here.
Hold on one second.
I can try to share it again if that's okay with everybody.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just gonna, I, I'm just gonna flip over to the, uh.
Mm-hmm.
Grading plan, um, Mr. Spalding, one second. Okay, I, so, um, you're talking about the retaining walls that are here around this lot, or you?
Right, so if you, if you could zoom in, you could see where the retaining walls that split the two houses on the south side. Where it goes in, it looks like the retaining wall. Is it, it's around two feet, three feet, four, and it keeps going up as it gets closer to the houses and then it's, um. Six feet to ten feet, I believe, as it goes and turns the driveways and.
Peter, can you zoom in so people can see it a little?
Yeah, hold on one second. Okay, so I, I assume you're talking about this retaining wall?
Um, look, the image needs to catch up a little bit. There you go. Yep, right in through there, correct.
Okay.
On either side as it comes through.
As it comes in here.
Yeah, it looks like it's, is it, am I correct by saying it's about six feet or so on the corner? And then it rises up as it goes into driveway to about ten feet.
Yes, yeah, but, but here's, here's the thing, Mr. Spalding. Um, when we do these things, we don't ultimately really know. Like in other words. We try to make things as simple as possible and, um. So I'm, I'm showing a retaining wall. The idea is it has to retain ten feet of soil. However. If the applicant decides he doesn't want to do a ten-foot wall, he would rather do, say, two four-foot walls that are terraced. In other words, do a four-foot wall here and then come back four feet and do another wall. He can do that as well. I, I had that happen recently at a project in North Andover where we had, you know, eight to ten-foot walls. And the client said, I don't want to build an eight to ten-foot wall. He, he ended up, you know, staggering smaller walls. So. This is really just kind of a representation of a, of a, of a retaining wall. Now. This could be, you know, if he decides he wants to build a segmental wall, um, a modular block wall, a reinforced concrete wall. Um, I know Mr. Uh, Lowery had, uh, asked last time about, uh, how much blasting is going on because our, our standard detail does. Say either native rock or blasted rock. Could be hammered rock, uh, could be anything like that. So if, it, the cheapest way, obviously, to make some of these stone walls sometimes, I just use. Rock that's available on site. However, I don't know exactly what he's going to construct these out of. Or if he wants to do this like in layers. I mean, he could decide to do three, three-foot walls and terrace them back.
Uh, my concern is a little bit more about how the runoff is going to be handled as it runs down from the proposed house driveways. Um, on either side. It looks like, I mean, it does slope back towards Stark Ave. Um, it, the. Would the island, let's call it an island, between the two driveways? Is that part of the low impact system?
Yes.
Where it would capture a lot of the runoff there? Or is the intent to have more of, um. A type of driveway or surface that is more permeable?
So, yeah, your, your first assessment was correct, uh, Mr. Spalding. So, this, um, this is infiltration pond three. This is infiltration pond four, and this is infiltration pond five.
Okay.
And what, huh, the way these are supposed to work is that. This is the biggest one. This gets most of the runoff from here. This captures, you, you know, the nice part is, as you know, you can go out. On your lawn in the summer and, and put the hose on your lawn. You'd have to really let it run for a long time before you actually see. Water moving through the grass. It usually gets soaked up pretty quick. So the idea is to get the water here and then essentially they all work in tandem. Once this one starts to build up a little bit, it cascades down, uh, or runs down a little stone spillway to this one. This one is accepting a small part of runoff here. This one's accepting a small part of runoff here. The only thing we did down the bottom here is. I would try, I'm gonna, I would like to try to keep as much of this driveway runoff off the road as possible. So I put in a, like a, you'd call it a, a mini catch basin or a yard drain with a grate. So any of the runoff, once the water starts building up here. I'm going to discharge that over to this infiltration pond, which essentially is going to take the roof of this property. And the trees and the landscaping here, here. Then same thing, this would discharge through a stone spillway to keep down on erosion and that type of thing. And as you know. Once that runs across lawn or woods or that type of thing, after you get through fifty, sixty, seventy-five feet of woods, that type of thing. You start to really slow down the erosion and, and that type of thing. So if this did get. Uh, clogged or that type of thing, it would have a, a little overflow spillway that would go here to this trench. And then the same thing, this trench would pick up the runoff, convey it down the road to this low area. Once that builds up, it would spill into a, like a level spreader, a riprap level spreader to slow all the velocity of the water down. And then the same thing, that would just discharge across the ground and then head over to this culvert here.
Okay, this is, thanks for the explanation. Um, as I'm learning more about the low impact and as a board, we've. We've worked with some rain gardens too, to understand more in previous projects.
Yep.
Um, I do like, I'm, I'm excited about this type of a design. Um, where it does spread out the runoff and, uh, you know, allows more of the land to absorb the water. I am interested to see what, um, our town engineer has as far as the. The amount of runoff and how it can be contained. I guess the last comment, because of mornings like. This morning and, and a few we have this week where we are going through like a, a, a freeze thaw cycle where some things in the morning are frozen. Not this morning, but in a few past mornings. Those driveways going through as it spills water out into the street or comes down off whatever type of retaining wall or terrace system. Is there any type of design for any, uh, culvert beneath the driveways? Or anything that would keep that slope from becoming icy or slippery into the street?
So these, um, so we're trying, what we're trying to do is, is pitch these driveways into this, into these ponds here. Uh, obviously the back edge of sidewalk, that type of thing, um, that pitches out to the street. Um, however, even like this driveway here, it's going to pitch this way. This is, this is a grass swale. That's set over a four-foot deep, three-foot wide, uh, stone trench.
Mm-hmm.
So essentially, anything that hits the street gets sent to the side and then. The grass swale provides treatment, the, um, the top layer of stone provides treatment and then it filters down through the stone. And then essentially, once you get here, if it does build up, it either goes into the ground or if you get a real storm that's high. Um, the water would build up and just spill over. Um. Your question about whether it frees thaw, that type of thing, um. Unfortunately, that's not a, that's not a way that engineers are able to model, uh, runoff. Um, so. Uh, and, and not, and not to make Mike say more complicated than it is. Uh, the NRCS gives us hydrologic soil groups. Um, you're, you're supposed to run these storms, um. Wake, Wakefield's a little bit different. You use the Cornell numbers, which are a little bit higher than the rest of Massachusetts. But you're supposed to run the drainage analysis with the idea that you're under normal moisture conditions. Um, if you get what happened like in the last few years, which all of us hate because we get. Ice dams and we get the water leaking through our, you know, bay windows. I'm speaking personally. Having a free, freeze, you know, having snow one day, then freeze the next day, then rain the next day makes a mess, uh, everywhere. Um, these, these are basically, um, the nice part about these is that the water gets down quickly, gets down into the stone. Um, and you don't have as much problems. Uh, at least that's, that's the intent. Uh, if you have nasty, terrible weather. You know, sometimes there's really not much you can do engineering wise and analyzing it, but I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but.
It does, and I'm, I'm always interested to hear new ideas to keep it more natural and obviously. Um, keep the land, um, and the, and the runoff with the types of storms we've had lately, as most of us have noticed. It seems like a couple inches of rain in an hour and then nothing for a while. So. It seems to be the trend. I'm not sure if that's moving forward, but we'll find out. Uh, the other part of the pervious driveway seems like if it was a pervious. M- material, it could soak in some of that as well and minimize the amount of runoff or freeze, but. I, I like your explanation to how this low impact is going to work through this area. And top, topping that on top of what Mr. Hogan asked, it's really starting to make sense to me to how this. Is a nice design. And again, I'm, I can't really decide on this as a board member until we do hear from our town engineer.
Oh, absolutely. And if you want to see, um, so I don't know if you, I don't know if Wakefield has any rain gardens, um. We do a lot of work in Middleton. If you happen to take a ride over to Middleton and you want to go over to the Starbucks there. Um, that whole front parking lot and rear parking lot, that's all rain gardens. Um, that work really nice and that actually takes the runoff and, and brings it back to another infiltration pond behind that building. Uh, there's a couple other buildings that we've done around one fourteen that also have rain gardens. Um, there's actually one under construction, two under construction, if you'd like to see it, two seventy-five North Main Street in Middleton. That's actually a new. Uh, restaurant facility there too. Uh, they're actually building those right now, uh, right on one fourteen. Um, Mass DOT, uh, actually liked the design. They were, they thought it was great. Because they don't usually like you to connect with, uh, hard piping anyways, so they kind of like these things because nothing gets onto their. I know their system, you know?
Good to have as a reference. We had a recent project at one oh seven Prospect Street here in Wakefield where we have some rain gardens. We also have a high retaining wall on one side with pavement sidewalk. And we did go underneath that to, to get to the rain garden. Um, if I remember correctly, Mr. Chair. I believe we went under the proposed road to get to the rain gardens for the drainage from. Um, the high retaining wall that exists, but.
Yeah, it, there, we have a couple of catch basins that collect the water and then, uh. We get over discharged to a rain garden.
Right. And, and that system seems to be working well. Uh, we haven't heard complaints from the abutters. And I know that system seems to be, I, I've gone by a couple of times when it has been really raining. Uh, the day after and it, it seems to contain it well. So I'm, I'm a believer in, in the rain garden and the low impact side.
To answer your other question, if any, any of the runoff that, you know, comes over this retaining wall and that type of thing, it's going to get picked up by this trench.
Hmm.
Um, so that, the idea is that the runoff will be picked up in the trench and won't reach the paved surface to try to cut down on the icing.
And that is something I haven't seen before. I'm really interested to see how that could work out and what our engineer thinks about it because that's. I think it's a great idea to have that swell, um, before it hits the road.
Well, we'll see what he thinks. I'm hoping I, um, maybe you could write a letter to him. Tell him you like it.
We've already been two meetings with him this week. I think we're good.
Okay.
Alright, anyone else have any comments? Theo?
I, I do want to follow, I'm sorry, Theo, were you gonna speak?
No, you, you can go, Bill.
One more thing, um. Attorney man asked about the, um, street trees, uh, that came up as a question. And, and our board is the board that will help with street trees. I think we have to get by and sorry, Matt, if I'm speaking out of turn. I think we have to get by this part of the plan first before we. Understand where some street trees will go. Um, and obviously with the conservation commission's comments, it would be good to follow up with them as well as regarding street trees.
Understood, thank you.
I understood that there weren't going to be street trees, because that would interfere with the trench.
So we, we did ask for, you're correct, Mr. Snow, we, we did ask for a waiver, um, for putting in street trees, um. However, I believe attorney man had, did mention last time that, you know, maybe. If we don't put trees in the traditional location, maybe we can put some additional trees, um, somewhere else. So we certainly don't want to. You know, it, it, trees typically called woody growth, that type of thing, the root penetration and, you, you know, they're not, they don't. They don't do well, um, in detention areas. You can probably drive around. Uh, Lynnfield and some of these other towns where, you know, some of these detention basins were put in twenty, thirty years ago and they haven't maintained and now they're completely overgrown. Uh, Lynnfield and some of these other towns where, you know, some of these detention basins were put in twenty, thirty years ago and they haven't maintained and now they're completely overgrown with trees. Um, and then the trees start to affect the um, the function of the ponds. So. I, I think there's probably some room here to add some trees here if, if, if you folks want to talk about it. I mean, obviously we're a little limited. You know, over here we have sewer water running through uh, over this entire area here. We have a drainage structure. But I, I think, I think we'd be willing to listen to see if there's some places that maybe makes sense to put some trees. If, if that seems reasonable.
But if I could respond with, um. Um, let's see how to put it. So two weeks ago I was in Washington DC for a site survey. Um, for a, a building that we have under construction. Um, and. I noticed along the streetway in the, in the Navy Yard area, which is a newer area, feels a lot like Seaport in Boston. They did a very unique, to me, unique um, street tree catch basin drainage. Um. Retention kind of pond thing going on, but it was part of the sidewalk. It was boxed in in a rectangle where it had runoff from the street being able to go into it. But it also had some street trees, almost like a mini. Um, rain garden. It was.
Yeah, that's, that's a little more set up for um, urban areas and not suburban areas.
Understood, but I'm thinking about the amount of runoff that could come down the driveways and of course with the slope here on the road as well. That we are going to get a flash of water coming through that it might be worth in the case, in the places where we think. The water is going to quickly rush down some of these slopes from Stark Ave, that it's possible to have some of those. Um. Types of small little rain gardens along the sidewalk that could also allow for some street trees.
But we're going to look at that. That's could be an alternative design that would look pretty. Would support low impact development and, you know, would provide the trees and, and the shade that the. The board and, and the regulations desire. So we'll definitely take a look at that. We've never thought about.
We can, we can look at it where, the only thing I'll, I'll mention to you is that we're a little tight on space over here. On the north side where the, where the sidewalk is. Unfortunately, if you put in a. If you put in a, you know, a thirty-six by thirty-six or a forty-eight by forty-eight box, you're essentially, um. You're not going to be able to get by it on the sidewalk.
Hmm.
If you put it out here, which is going to be the stone trench next to the pavement, you might have a little bit of an issue. I, I mean, I, I, I heard, you know, the chairman earlier talk about, you know, trucks and people driving down. If you have a tree. That's a foot and a half, two feet off the pavement. You know, maybe that's not the best thing, but kind of like what Attorney Man just said. We're willing to think outside the box and maybe we can find something that works for everybody and try something.
Let's just take a look at it because we'd never thought about that. That's a good suggestion, Mrs. Balding. I mean, I think it would make, I think it'd make the street look pretty. So, well, let us, you know, it has advantages. Um, I, I realize fundamentally and then aesthetically as well. So we'll definitely take a look.
Well, if as a board, we do decide that street trees in conjunction with the conservation commission is something that we want to have here. Um, then I, I think that's just another option to look at.
Yep. Understood.
Um. So I, yeah, um. I guess, uh, this is maybe a process question that I, I can ask later, um, sort of about how, how we. Uh, do ultimately review the drainage plan with uh, town engineering and with the conservation commission. Because I ended up like having a lot of uh, specific questions about the modeling and, and things like that, that. Um. Are, are worth knowing, but, but maybe not.
Um, as far as, what, what type of software we use, that type of thing, or what do you mean about?
Well, and I mean, some, some of what's built into the model like, um, had, to what extent does this account for climate change? And the expectation of uh, more in this, you know, more flash runoff or things like that. And to what, to what extent are you building in future capacity? Um, because it, it's unclear to me.
So right now, so the, the standard. So the standard right now for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is that you use uh, rainfall data amounts for each county based on what's called Technical Paper Forty. Um, that's been the standard for eons. Uh, Wakefield uses. For, it's called the, the Cornell study, uh, which I think is the Northeast Regional Climate Study that was done out of Cornell University. So the, the. Uh, for instance, uh, Technical Paper Forty for a hundred year storm or, or, or one percent chance. Uh, is six and a half inches in a twenty-four hour period. Uh, Wakefield uses the Cornell study, which is eight point one one uh, inches in um, twenty-four hour period. So essentially, when you do a drainage design in Wakefield. You're actually providing a larger drainage design than you would say be providing in Lynnfield or Middleton or that type of thing. Because you're, you're using uh, more runoff uh, volume and rate. Um, than some of the surrounding towns. Um. So as far as climate change goes, um, these, these programs are called HydroCAD, there's other ones and. They're based off of the um. Uh, United States Department of Agriculture's um, original models that were done um, to. To predict flow rates and that type of thing. I, to my knowledge, um. There's no way to build in any type of a flash flood or, or that type of thing. Um, certainly we don't have any type of sea rise or anything here. Um, so I, I would say that the, the numbers that we're using for Wakefield are already a little more conservative than. Normal uh, for rain. Um. I don't recall the last time we actually got, uh, I guess you would say a true a hundred year storm. Um, I mean, the biggest one that I can remember was actually from working in Wakefield, I think was the two thousand, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. I think it was like the two thousand and three Mother's Day storm that absolutely soaked Wakefield with like, I don't know, thirteen inches of rain. But it was like in thirty-six hours or something. I remember the runoff coming down because I was doing drainage studies around Quantapawat. Um, you know, everything was flooded. But as far as, um. Climate change, to my knowledge, nothing has, uh, has been, um. Looked at as far as policy change or how you would even predict it or model it as far as a small three, a lot subdivision like this. If that answers your question, Miss Snow.
Um, that's helpful context, thank you. All right, uh, you have no other questions, Theo? Okay. Megan, do you have any questions at this point or?
Um, I guess I'm just most concerned in regards to this turnaround at the end, I kind of hyper focused on that and as we head into the winter season. Uh, just in the visuals, um, I'd love to kind of, we had talked about the snow. Um, removal and kind of dumping the snow at the end of the circle. And I just didn't know if there had been any discussions or additional decisions made in regards to. Um, where the snow might go, uh, because without, without a full turn. Option, my assumption is that most snowplows are just going to dump the snow at the end uh, and back up. Um, versus um, having the ability, right, to do a, a full turn and take the snow and push it. All the way back down the street. So I just didn't know in regards, I'm trying to understand, right, the. Um, amount of room for snow buildup at the end of the road there. Um. And the, and if there was any additional kind of thought process that had gone um, into that, uh, or if that's part of. Um. Yeah, I just would love to hear if there is any additional thoughts in regards to the, the snow removal and or. Um, snow storage.
So, um, you know, unfortunately, this isn't a private, um. Property site plan type of thing. So I, I'm, I'm sure as the planning board, you see a lot of site plans that come before you. Um, for apartment complexes and that type of thing. And I'm sure one of the things you always ask for is like, you know, where are the snow storage areas? Um, you know, when we, when you're dealing with a, um, you know, a public roadway. Um, really the only place to put the snow is on the side of the road. Um, and I'm sure it's the same thing that happens on every street in Wakefield. Uh, it gets plowed to the side. Um, it gets plowed to the end. Um, people complain and the only way to really alleviate it is the town has to send down a bulldozer. Or in a, in a truck and take it out. Um, the Massachusetts DEP snow storage uh, guidelines and that type of thing. Just basically, they don't want you to dump it directly in the wetlands. Um, they want you to put it someplace uh, where the snow can melt. And then can just either filter into the ground or just, you know, run across grass and that type of thing. So, um. The only place to really store snow here is on the side of the road. Um, or if it got to the point where it's uh, uh, an issue, you just push it down to the end of the road or you have to come remove it. Because there's really no other place you can put it, uh, unfortunately.
And with the ten foot potential retaining wall, would that be an impediment with the? With the snow on, on that side if that was the decision being made?
So, um. You've got about, uh, so the, the ten foot retaining wall on the south side is about eight feet from the edge of pavement. So. If you got a, a, a winter like we had, I don't know, three, four years ago where you get ten feet of, ten feet of snow. I, I don't know. I mean, I got to the point where I couldn't even throw the snow any higher anymore uh, over the bank. So. I don't know. It's a great question. Uh, I get the question all the time and there never seems to be an answer that everybody is really a hundred percent. Um, happy with. I mean, we, we live in New England. We, we get on an average, I don't know, forty-five inches a year of precipitation. Um, we put the snow where we can, um, and essentially we try to keep the walks clear and not dump it into the wetland. So, um. You know, you look at some of the other towns, um. It's, it's the same thing they had. They, they might have a, they might have a snow storage policy where once it gets to be a certain depth along the side of the road, they have to come and remove it. I don't know how that would work here, uh, where it's going to be a, a public road.
Okay. We can ask the question when we meet with Mr. Renault because between him and DPW, they would tell us what their policy will be. Because typically it is just to have the snowplows plow all along the sides of the road. There never is a snow storage because it would impede on private property. So they don't usually do it, but I mean, I don't think it would be an issue if they wanted to plow off the end of this. Into the, you know, remainder of the right of way. We can, we can bring it up and just see what, um, Bill Renault says, right, Peter? I mean, we can ask.
Absolutely. Um. Yeah, I mean.
That will be able to report to you, Ms. McCully. I mean.
We, we, we can ask, yeah, we can ask him what he wants to do. Like I said, um. You know, as, like you said, DEPs. You, they just, they don't want you dumping salt and, and snow and then that type of thing, you know, right into the wetland. So, you know. What we try to do is put them on upland areas, um, like Attorney Man just said, um. You know, the, 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 the private way basically ends. And starts here at this road, so everything else would be out in the roadway except for this area here. Again, it's a good place to store snow, but now you have the, um, you have the, um, the problem. Well. Now you're taking away some of that turnaround area. So it's, it's kind of a catch twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And the, and the. Um, you know, just concerned about the wet, where are the wetlands on this? Is it the north side?
Yeah, so, sure, there's, there's a, there's a wetland system here. And then here's your culvert and then you have another wetland system here on the south side. So we're, 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 except for right here next to the end of the existing roadway. I mean, most of the, most of what everything we do is greater than. Uh, twenty-five feet away from the wetland.
Okay.
All right, um. I still have a few questions, so. Uh, again. I think you understand, I, with, with this turnaround, um. If it's going to be constructed, I think it needs to be constructed to today's, you know, to be practical with today's. Standards and copying a design from the fifties and trying to use it now, I don't think is a.
What? So Mr. Mr. Lowry, what standard are you referring to? So you want, you're saying that?
Well, the town has, the town has standards for cul-de-sacs, correct?
It's, it's a one hundred foot diameter paved circle. Yes.
Yes, and there's a reason for that to, to turn vehicles around and, and make it easy for.
I, I gotta, I gotta tell you. I, I think a hundred foot pavement diameter circle is overkill. It just produces extra runoff and it's just a sea of pavement. Uh, you don't need that much pavement to turn a vehicle around it, nor do you need that much to do a three-point turn. Um, you can get a vehicle in and out of it safely. Um, as the Wakefield Fire Chief had told me a long time ago, uh, these things come with reverse. We don't have to be able to turn around a one continuous loop. So, um. I do understand what you're saying, but I don't know that a hundred foot diameter circle here is. The answer.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not saying a hundred foot, but. Uh, we do have design standards for today's vehicles and what type of traffic we have going down there. I think to have a roadway to able to turn around, uh, standard trucks that at least go up there. You know, frequently meaning garbage trucks, recycling vehicles. Uh, box trucks that have to do deliveries. Uh, they should be able to, to turn around up there conveniently.
Is that, is that a requirement in your rules and regulations that I missed?
Uh, if, if we have a cul-de-sac that has certain requirements, I would say yes.
Okay, I, I, and again, I'm just asking you, I, I know we have to give a satisfactory design to the fire department. I'm not aware of any requirement in the Wakefield rules and regulations that say we have to provide a turnaround for a garbage truck, a recycling truck, a delivery truck. Um, if, if there is such a thing, I would like to see it. If there isn't, I. I don't understand how this design that can turn a passenger vehicle completely around all the way up to a twenty-four foot ambulance. Doesn't meet the qualifications. We're asking for waivers, obviously, and, and you have the, you have the ability to not grant the waiver. But I guess what I'm asking for is there really isn't a standard. Of what you need to be able to turn completely around in the town of Wakefield. This is just something that sounds to me like you're, you'd like to see. But we've already demonstrated that you can get a forty-seven foot ladder truck in and out in a three-point turn, um, with no difficulty.
All right, could you bring up the cross section?
The cross section of the roadway?
Yes.
Sure.
Or actually, uh, yeah, why don't you bring that up?
Sure.
Maybe you could zoom in some so everyone can see.
Sure, I know, I'll catch up with you. Okay, everybody see that?
Yep.
And one of my big concerns is, again. Um, we've got a twenty-four foot wide pavement here. Uh, the examples that you've shown for. For mostly these low impact have twenty-six foot wide, so you're a little bit smaller than the standard ones you had. Um. You've got basically. Uh, on the, on the left side, you've got a runoff right into P Stone, correct?
Yes.
So you, do, do you expect that all people to be driving into that at all or not?
No, because we usually set them down a, a minimum of an inch or so, so that there's a little bit of a, a lip. So you mean, you mean, do they drive?
Drive off that into it.
Kind of like, but Attorney Man had said earlier, I, I don't know. I mean, do people drive off the road now or hit the curbs? Sure.
Well, they hit the curbs if, if there's a curb there to hit that would tell them that they're getting to the edge of the roadway. So. So this is one of my concerns is that. There is basically. And going down a roadway, trying to turn around on that, you're going to have people that will try to make a full turn. They're going to be driving into these. Detention swales you have, I believe. So that's one of my concerns right there. The other thing is, uh. In the winter for snow plowing, they're going to plow. Basically as far as they can, correct? Snow plow?
I would.
Yes, so they're gonna, they're gonna plow as, as wide a road as they can.
Yeah, they usually go about two feet, a foot to two feet in from the end of pavement usually, yes.
Or, or they go to where the carb line is.
They never go to the curb line, but they, because they just don't, but I know what you mean.
Okay. So say they, they plow everything to the edge of the roadway. So you're going to be stacking all the snow on each edge of the roadway, correct?
Yeah, as normal, yes, yes.
So the water's got to get penetrate through that snow into, um, into these. Drainage swales, correct?
Yes.
So when they ice up, where's the, where's the water going to go? And we do have conditions where. Uh, you've got hard packed snow on the sides, uh, we get rain. You've got the, the snow already packed in there. Where's the water going, how's the water going to run at that point?
I guess I'm not following you.
He's, he's asking, he's, he's saying that it, it's the same exact way it would flow in a non-LID. Because you still have hard pack and you got to run to a base. In a non-LID because you still have hard pack and you gotta run to a basin. So he's saying to you, if you have hard pack. How then does the swell transmit the fluid, basically the water and absorb it, Peter? That's what he's asking.
Oh, uh how?
Same way.
So. Uh okay, so the water seeks its own level. Even if, even if some of the runoff is coming off some of the road, there's, there's, there's runoff coming from other parts of the uh the site that reach it. This, once you get down here to the bottom, this doesn't freeze. So even if this is able to free, I guess you're asking what happens when the, when the surface freezes?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, the water, the water will sit in the pipe and infiltrate through the bottom. Or it will build up and once it gets to a low point, um it'll spill over. Um or the runoff will sit here in the.
I'm talking, I'm talking the, the, the water on the roadway, the the plowed roadway. Normally, it would run down a curb line into a catch basin and then be collected.
Right.
If, if the roadway, if if all the water has to run off the roadway into the, into this peystone.
Okay, if it became blocked, okay, I I guess I understand, I'm sorry. Um so you're asking for like a doomsday scenario, gotcha.
I know, I'm talking, I'm talking spring.
Alright, so.
This is not a doomsday scenario. If you don't think we have freeze thaw and this doesn't happen most every year, then.
So if, if, if somehow this got blocked, um and water wasn't able to penetrate uh down here at the low area. Um what would happen is you would start to get a puddle. I think then what would happen would be um. Someone would probably walk out here with a shovel and try to maybe clear it a little bit to let the runoff get in the, get in here, kinda like when. I don't know, I wanna catch basin gets full of leaves, you you clear it out, or if you catch basin gets blocked, you clear it out. So. This would essentially build up and build up and build up until it either runs over the back of the sidewalk into this basin. Or it runs up, uh gets to a point, it's gonna run over here and then run down here. Eventually, the water will spill over.
Okay.
But um, I, I, I kinda like I mentioned earlier, you, you can't hype, you can't do a model based on a freeze thaw, rain, snow. It just, it's, it's impossible to model it.
Yeah, I understand that and and I, and I, I see what happens in winters when. All these roadways get clogged up, so making something that is more, you know, more of a maintenance issue. It is a concern to me. Um one thing is that.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I misunderstood you, Mr. Larry. I wasn't trying to um.
No, I, I, I understand. Um one thing that, if this does get approved like this. Is that uh it's never gonna be accepted, I believe, as a public way. Because there's too many maintenance issues on this thing. So you're gonna have a homeowners association that's gonna take care of this?
I'm gonna lateral that one over to Jill.
Yeah, this is, if the town doesn't want to accept it, then we don't have an issue doing a homeowners association. That's pretty simple to do.
So there's a, there's a full operation and maintenance plan um that's included in the stormwater report. Yeah, I mean, I I I think that's probably what's gonna happen. There'd be homeowners associates and it would maintain it.
It will be, that'd be exactly what it'll be. And then the homeowners association has the O N M that they have to comply with and they maintain, they. Do everything they need to do and then it's a private way.
Alright, and so the, the couple homeowners that. Are are getting this by, not by choice, but that you're building in front of them, would they be part of this association?
What homeowners are we building in front of?
I, I think he's talking about uh number fifty nine.
Oh, that'll have a street instead of a driveway. Um. I mean, they, they, I, they can be. I don't own their property. They'd have to voluntarily enter into it. Otherwise, it would just be the three homeowners.
Okay, so.
I mean, I don't think, pardon, okay.
So, so my point is, so if there was a homeowners association to to maintain this from. The end of the accepted Stark Gav where it is now further down, it would basically be that these three homeowners.
Yep.
It wouldn't be that house there or the town of Wakefield that owns the lot across the street, correct?
Yes, there's only going to be the three homes that we have control.
Okay, alright, that's um, so um actually, if you.
Like, I think Wakefield will still have to um maintain the um, the sewer.
Well, it's a plow, because if it doesn't plow, then it's not supposed to be open to the public. So it's supposed to maintain safety. But as far as the drainage basins and things, we would maintain them.
Right, the the town, I think, would would still have to maintain the culvert and the twenty four inch uh sewer, but.
Well, that's already done, right? Isn't that present?
That's already there. I I don't, I don't think the homeowners association will be taking care of that. I think that's.
No, I mean, we wouldn't take over an existing condition.
I don't, I don't believe so.
Alright, um. So, Peter, uh I think, are you the host now? Are you the one? Cause.
Oh.
Could you not screen share so I can?
Oh, absolutely.
I could fix that.
Hang on, I'm, I'm back. Sorry about that.
Do you have it? Are you the host, Bill?
Yeah, you made me the host.
Okay, even better.
You're now back as the host.
Alright, as long as I can screenshot, that would be good.
Um, Mr. Blaisdale is the co-host and I am no longer.
Trying not to let all this power go to my head, but it's, it's tough, yeah.
Alright, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna screen share something, so. So, I don't know if you can see that?
Yes.
Alright, so I pulled this out of the op- the operation and maintenance plan out of the stormwater report. So, um. Just looking through some of this, the maintenance that's required for this. Stone infiltration trench basin, trenches, infiltration basins and subsurface infiltration structures. It's, it's pretty extensive for maintaining these trenches, isn't it?
Once they get established, not really, but you do have, you do have to. I mean, I tell everybody the same thing. You, you can't just put these things in the ground and then forget about them, because they, they will eventually fail. But if you. Have, if you follow these guidelines and you, and you follow our procedures for how often you should check them, then. Anytime there's a, like, like, you're, you made a good point earlier, and I'm sorry, I missed, I missed what you were saying. If someone were to. Drive down the street and like you said, uh drive over the uh stone trench. Make a mess, I don't know, spin out the tires, do whatever. Someone's gonna have to go back in and rake the stone or put it back in or replace it and that type of thing. It, it, if, if it kept on happening and no one ever repaired it. Yeah, they're not gonna work after a while. So um the stone infiltration trenches uh do require maintenance. Um the surface infiltration basins, those actually, once those get established and the vegetation are on them, they actually don't require a lot of maintenance. To to keep functional. Um the subsurface structures are for the roof runoff. Typically, that's left up to each individual homeowner to do that, but where the roof runoff typically um is clean, you might get some leaves in there, that type of thing. They have inspection ports in them that you can just pop open and take a look down just to make sure it's working or if it's clogged. So there is quite a bit of maintenance that goes in it. Once these things are under construction and get going, but once, once they start working. Routine maintenance, like you would do with catch basins, um seems to do the trick. And if you have any problems, you know, you have to repair them.
Well, that, that, see, that's one of my concerns is because we have a lot of. A lot of homeowner. Basically, responsibility for maintaining drainage structures in towns that. And they have uh inspection requirements. And I'll challenge you to go to town hall and find all of these. Uh inspection reports that are supposed to be filed every year because they're never done.
You're, you're right. Um however, that is changing. Um because a lot of towns are starting to crack down on them and um we get contacted a lot by people now that are asking us to go do inspections for them. And then file them with the town. So, that being said, um. You know, I can't force people to do them, but um. It, it does seem to be um getting better uh in that people are filing them more frequently. I'll let Jill speak more often to that sometimes about how things have to be provided as far as part of the contracts or the. Are the requirements, but um I know some towns are definitely going after some of these homeowners associations and they're asking them to provide them.
Yeah, but. In a practical matter, and especially, it seems in Wakefield, is that there is no enforcement on this, unfortunately. And there are some issues with with drainage structures that aren't maintained.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Having the town have to take legal action to get people to correct them is not, you know, is not feasible, to tell you the truth. So building something, so building something that um is a standard maintenance for the rest of the town. Is something, you know, I would be more favorable to going through, looking at. And I don't know if the other members have looked at this, if what is, is needed in these inspections and how these have to be rehabilitated. When they don't work anymore. It's a lot of work. I don't see the homeowners doing it, and I definitely know the town is not gonna do it. The town can barely. Pay and maintain the streets they have right now.
Well, it's the same as catch basins and uh in sediment forbays and and infiltration basins. Um they all require maintenance. Um this is just another version. Instead of catch basins, we've got peestones and trenches, so. I agree with you. I, I think it's a pain for the town to have to go do these things, but. The only other option to do is to do no drainage. And then you don't comply with any of the regulations, so. I don't know what the, I don't, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, that's not an option here, there's no drainage, but I guess the other option would be a traditional drainage system.
But that's gonna require the town to maintain as well.
Right, I mean. If we put in, if we put in a traditional subdivision here with catch basins and curbing and that type of thing, then the town's gonna have to come. Clean out the catch basins, right?
And and they do that, yes.
Okay, well, I mean.
That, I see they, they do, so.
No, I, I, I'm with you. I see the clamshells all over the place. Um yeah, but these, like I said, these, these don't necessarily require the same amount of maintenance as catch base. Um they're, they're different.
But I do think we need probably, you know, have Bill Reynolds take a look and see what he thinks and, you know, obviously with your comments, but um. Again, yeah, low impact development does have. These issues with regard to maintenance, but it has its benefits. It is a far preferable way to manage drainage. And you know, if people see things clogging up on their property, they typically take action. And they'll be directly in front of them. When people see their drainage basins full and the leaves clogged in the right way, they do nothing. They don't, they don't shovel out the leaves, they don't shovel out the ice, they let them, they let them just sit there, because it's not on their property. These are on their property. Well, a lot of them are, maybe not the swells, but these basins that Peter has shown you are, and they'll take care of them and they'll be responsible for doing it. I mean, we can't assume they won't because you can't assume failure, you have to assume compliance and you do so with your conditions. And if. The town doesn't enforce them. Shame on the town.
E- e- exactly. It is, it's a shame that, that it, it, that the homeowners have to maintain this and. And no one enforces it that they, when they don't, so.
Because I know in Boxford, it's all country drainage and it's well done and it's enforced.
Yeah, again, this is something completely new in Wakefield, so. It, so doing this. Potentially on, on something that is this close to wetlands might, to me, I don't know if it's the right place to try this, to tell you the truth. So that's where I'm leaning on this. Uh the fact that um. We're introducing a, a maximum eight-foot slope on the roadway. We've got curves. We're at the end of a road where we're gonna be piling up snow. You've got uh. Peystone trenches on the side of the road. You, you've got three to one slopes where. For runoff. With no curbing, to me, it, it just doesn't sound like. It's, it's workable, to tell you the truth.
Again, let, let's, I mean, I think it's, it's, you know, it's a good comment. We hear you. And we think obviously it's preferable because the alternative is to build up the road and have more road, we'd have more walls. That's why the drainage in the traditional sense would work, correct, Peter?
Well, so let's just say, for instance, we didn't do this. We, what we'd have to do is we'd have to raise all the grades quite a bit. We would have uh catch, probably four to six catch basins. We'd have to put in uh probably twenty fifteen to twenty five hundred gallon. Uh water quality sediment tanks. And then we'd probably have to put in, uh because there's no room. Uh we'd have to probably put under the roadway wherever we could, um cultech chambers. So you'd still have, I guess you would call them a low impact development. Uh some people call chambers low impact developments, some don't. You'd have to do a lot of your uh water quality and runoff under the roadway itself. Um you, you'd have to try to take that and maybe discharge to one side of the road or the other to try to put in some ponds. Um that would have overflows or control structures. You, you'd be getting um something that would be more, I guess you'd say classical Wakefield with uh. Catch basins and curbing and uh that type of thing, but. You're, you're really not working with the land. You're, you're kind of forcing the land, if you know what I mean. I could, I could certainly get it to, I could certainly get it to work, I think. Um but it would be more. I don't think it would, it would, it would look as nice when you would done. I don't think it would be as aesthetically pleasing. That's just my opinion. I'm not saying that you, you'd have to agree with me. I just think you would probably see that um it doesn't come out as nice.
Okay. Again, that's, that's basically where I'm, I'm leaning on this is that, you know. I don't think this is the, the proper place to try something new in Wakefield for this. So, and again. If you're gonna be extending the road, there needs to be um basically. Some, an improvement to what's there now. Uh moving what we have now, which is. Basically inadequate further down the road. I don't see as an improvement or benefit to the town. So.
I, I guess I'm getting confused with, there has to be an improvement. I, I can't, I, I'm just confused by that. What do you mean by that? I, an improvement to whom and for what? I, I don't, I just don't understand.
There, there, there seems to be an issue from what we've heard from many of the, the buddies up there of. Of trucks not being able to turn around. There's just an issue with that, the roadway being too narrow. For as many vehicles that travel that dead-end road as it is right now. So, making it so. Vehicles don't have to turn around in people's driveways or choose not to go to the end of the road because they know they've been down there. And they can't turn around, so why am I gonna drive down three hundred feet? I'll just turn around right here in someone's driveway. So.
But our last, but our last, our last revision to you showed us taking that away to remove that and everybody hated it. So you want us to go back to taking the existing, I, I guess I'm confused in that. It seemed like it was a no-brainer that everybody hated. Keeping the cul-de-sac there. I'm sorry, hated removing the cul-de-sac because they wanted additional places for turnout. I understand, one of the neighbors up the street said it's difficult to have Jordan's furniture come down and drop off. Uh furniture. I, I don't know, I don't know how you answer that question. It, it's, I mean, the only way to make that road better would be for the town to do an eminent domain taking. Increase the roadway out to fifty feet, take everyone's front yard, expand the, expand the. Uh roadway out to twenty six feet, put a hundred foot diameter cul-de-sac at the end and then, then everybody's happy? I, I don't understand. I mean. We're trying to, we're trying to. Build a, a roadway. Make it safe and and build three additional houses. The people that are already on that road bought their house. They knew when they bought that house that that's what the road was. So I don't understand how building three houses at the end of this road somehow is gonna make their life more difficult.
I didn't say it's making our life more difficult. Well, I'm just saying.
It certainly seems like that's the feedback that we're getting, that somehow adding. Three more houses onto a road that already has thirty two houses on it somehow makes the situation worse. And I guess I'm just. I don't understand how that's the case.
Okay. That, that's. Alright. That's fine. Alright, so. Do you wanna go over the waivers you have or how do we wanna, where do you wanna go next with this?
Sure, so I would, there really were, the waivers were predominantly something that Mr. Renault is going to have to respond to. And one of the things that we wanted to speak to you about were the street trees, which Mr. Spalding addressed, and we're gonna try and be a little more creative. And then that would be something we would discuss whether or not a waiver would even be appro- And then that would be something we would discuss whether or not a waiver would even be appropriate, and maybe we could add. Non-traditional street trees, but still kind of keep in the spirit of that, so that's gonna be postponed, and I understand. The other app, the other thing was with regard to the um sidewalks on both sides. So on the beginning of Stark Avenue, there clearly are sidewalks on both sides. I mean, it's an exceptionally dense. Street, there's thirty two homes on that street, you know, frontage ranges from fifty to one hundred and twenty five feet. Here you have fully compliant frontage lots. I mean, they will meet with all of the compliance elements relative to frontage. So we only have three homes on this four hundred foot section, so we're asking to simply put in. One sidewalk to handle those three homes instead of a sidewalk on each side. And the reason is, again, it's low impact development. I mean, the purpose of. Current day design is to reduce impervious, reduce man-made structures, reduce alterations to property. Go with the flow, try and make sure that the design of the land follows the actual topography and not manipulate it like it has been. You know, in the fifties, where it was just easier to bulldoze and create. Um, so that's why we're looking for that relief, to have sidewalk clearly on one side to provide people the ability to walk by and. Turn around on the same street and walk down the same sidewalk side. Um, and if that, if the board's willing to grant that waiver, or if we have to put sidewalk in front of all three homes. On each side.
We have routinely. Granted a waiver for this, because we understand not everyone's gonna walk down there. If if this was a a full cul-de-sac and you had multiple homes on there. Normally, uh, I. I usually like to see sidewalks there, and and I know we have one subdivision that was done years ago, where they only put sidewalks on one side of the road. Uh, and. Basically. It was an issue, because the people on the other side just did not get out as much. It it's kind of strange, but people that had strollers on on one side, you know, you'd see them more, so. Um, from what I saw on that, having sidewalks on both sides, if there's a house there. Uh, we would want that, but down here, uh, I wouldn't see an issue with granting a waiver for that. And potentially not even having it go all the way down the street, so I don't see an issue with that.
That was honestly, I mean, we can go through all of the waivers, Mr. Lowry, but the other waivers are truly. So design specific and tailored to Mr. Reynolds. I don't know that it's fair to even review them with the board without having your. Your engineer comment on them first.
Well, I was, I was just gonna suggest that, Joe, that maybe instead of having, again, it's, it's, I I'm sure the, I'm sure the board doesn't wanna go through every waiver with the idea that. A lot of them might change anyways, if Bill wants to give them an offer, then it's up to you. We can go through them, or if you want, we can sit down with Bill and then come back with the ones he says he's gonna recommend to you. I mean, he doesn't vote on them, you do, but um.
Correct, yeah.
Entirely entirely what whatever you wanna do, Mr. Chairman.
All right, no, for for that, that that's fine. Um, there is the, you know. The big one is it's it's the extension of Stark Gav. Because we are over the maximum limit of a of a cul-de-sac in town.
Yep.
So that's one thing that you're looking for, an extension of. Four hundred and thirteen feet on the roadway, that's about fourteen hundred feet now, or?
Yep, thirteen hundred feet long now.
Okay, so um, that would be something that. Obviously, that's not up to the town engineer, that would be up to this board, so I don't know.
They're all up to you, but yeah, I mean, that one, I just figured you'd wanna hear from everybody first, but if you wanna discuss that now, we can.
Well, I I think I just, I just said my thoughts on that. Um, if we're gonna be extending this roadway, there has to be. Some kind of improvement to the situation we have down there. So I don't know, anyone else, the board members wanna uh comment on that at this point? How you feel about granting this waiver? We're gonna have to voter at some point, so uh.
Oh, yeah, so Matt, this is, this is one of the ones where I'd requested the uh supplemental feedback from uh town council. Um, the reason being is that uh Attorney Mann provided the the letter associated with this. That from my reading of the letter seemed to have a position of that, the uh, that this is as of right. For for lack of a better term, as it relates to the creation of this this way. A- and in the the extension of this way, because of the paper street and that the fact that this was provided prior to subdivision control law. Which therefore would impact the ability of of our board to take action on those waivers or, you know. The ability to condition of those, um, specifically as it relates to, believe some of the language around uh unreasonable. Conditions that impact the ability to um have the economics of the uh of the building. I don't know if there, Aaron, Aaron's still on the line, if we hear back from uh town council as it relates to, you know, what the. The reading from the town council is on most, those two aspects, but I'd be interested in understanding that aspect, you know, in terms of from the legal positioning of. What the town thinks we can or cannot do as it relates to back of those specific conditions.
Yeah, so I'm here, sorry, I I ha- always have to pick a, take a backseat in this type of stuff, so I think I would hand it over to Bill or Matt to. With our conversation, we actually talked to town council about that, so.
Yeah, um, we we did have a a meeting. The vice chair, myself, Aaron, town engineer, and and Tom Mullin. To address some of your your questions about, um, one of them was um. The relocation of the roadway is that the owners. Option to do that. So. And. Yeah, so Jill, can you? Can you explain how you're able to basically relocate the roadway? And then use the land that was formerly part of the roadway uh and absorb it into one of the lots? Can you explain that?
So, um, there's this, there's this concept called the derelict fee statute, so. When anybody creates a subdivision roadway, they sell off these lots to everybody, right? And at the end of the day, ninety percent of the old town um developers never did anything with the way. They said, okay, you have lot one. You have lot two, by the road, by the road, by the road, and never said anything about the road, so who owns the road? So common law practice said, well, the people who abut the road own the road to the central line. That's the way it works. So that's the derelict fee statute, and eventually this common law practice simply became a statute. So a reading of of section fifty eight says, listen, if a grantor, i.e. the developer, right, does not specifically. Retain the interest, that means they say you are getting lot one, but I reserve the right. To the fee interest in the road, so if you compare a deed, I get, I I don't know how many of you are new developments or old developments. But if any of you are in a development that was built anytime after nineteen ninety, your, your grantor, if you bought from the developer. Specifically says, I, the grantor hereby reserve the all rights of fee in the roadway. And they specifically do that, so they can sell that roadway to the town. Now, I don't know how you ended up taking Stark Avenue. I didn't do research on every one of those properties in the middle, but the town clearly had to take. It's a public way, so you were conveyed the fee. So these particular street, it was not done, the roadway was not conveyed. And that meant that the people who owned to the central line own the road. So when you have that happen, now you have ownership, so the people who abut it, which we abut the full. Um, I don't know, it's a quadrilateral, some sort of shape, right? We, that, the, those collective homeowners own the entire fee of the road. So that's the first element you have to establish. Now you have to establish, well, what are your what rights? Well, as a person who owns a lot in a subdivision, you have the right to improve that way. And sometimes that would require to improve the way relocating it because of wetland. Um, sometimes wetland really didn't exist in the nineteen twenties that exists today, because there never was stormwater management. So people who built in the nineteen fifties drained to their neighbors and created wetland everywhere that never otherwise didn't exist. So you don't know where the wetlands were, and now we have a situation where the wetlands are definitely to the. I'm sorry, I'm gonna say north, but it's probably south above when I look at the plan, right? So in order to stay away, to maintain that twenty five feet, we simply have pushed down and relocated the road, because we own it. So we can relocate the easement. The quality of the easement remains the same. The right of passage for all the people in the subdivision remains the same. And we actually provided, if you'll note, the road comes up and then it comes back, so that when the connection point happens. At the back, it still feeds to where we no longer own the right of way, but rather I think the town owns a piece. So that's how your right to relocate in easement exists. You have the right to relocate, improve, and construct a way. So that's where that element comes in. Now, Mr. Lowry, do you want me to go to the second letter as well?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so now, you you know, there was also always this question, so what are these lots? Because um I've been doing this for a long, long time, thirty five years. And um I always come across roads that are just like this, paper streets, because I practice in towns like Middleton. Wakefield, Topsfield, Ba- Boxford, where there were people grizzwalled predominantly, this family owned everything and did these roadways. And the subdivisions in the nineteen twenties. So as you know, under subdivision control law, if you have a plan and it's a record plan, then it is considered, oh, it's considered a subdivision. And subdivision control does not apply. Now, that doesn't mean that the law is going to take the power out of the planning board's hands. And that's very, very, very important, and that's kind of why I asked Mr. Lowry, what do you mean by improvement? Because the standard is that you maintain safe, adequate access for those portions of the roadway you're creating. Because think of it, people have bought, people have owned, families have held. Maybe back in the twenties, they only paid thirty dollars for a piece of land, but they also only made two dollars a week. So it's about economics. So when somebody has bought a parcel of land, have held it, and it's not been. Um, checkerboarded in some odd way, but literally if held and owned with the intent to develop. That's why there's certain restrictions placed on a board relative to what standards can be applied. So when you look at it, you look at the current standards of Stark Avenue, that's why you'll notice in my letter, I say, okay, Stark Avenue is thirteen hundred feet long, twenty four foot paved. And it's got a forty foot right of way, and that's shown on the plan. So any requirement to increase that is unfair, unreasonable, and economically invalid. So that's how you kind of approach it. However, you as a board have an obligation to the public, you have an obligation to those lot owners. To make sure access is safe, which is why our mandate relative to that turnaround. Is to ensure that the fire department has no issue. If the fire department had an issue, we would have an issue, and we'd need to make that sound. Um, and that's why, so I I wanted to make it clear, and I hope I did in that letter, that while these lots are considered exempt. Exempt simply means I don't have to go through subdivision control, but I have to go through your process, because you don't have. Um, an adequate access bylaw, which many, many towns with this situation have. So the requirement is to follow your subdivision control, request the appropriate waivers, and demonstrate safety. And once we do that, it's the board's obligation to ensure you do not encumber. Or unfairly disadvantage the lot owners who abut that way. That makes sense?
Yes, thank you for that, for that uh explanation. I think that makes a a lot of sense. I I mean, when I look at this and I'm I'm looking, because I was looking at the plans with the idea of, you know, safety. Based on the the letter and my understanding of what we had or did not have as it relates to the rights and responsibilities for. Uh, parcels that were now under subdivision control, and you know, in my opinion, you know, the what's being presented on the plan does not. Materially impact safety and access, you know, I think the demonstration of the fire trucks. And the, you know, the ability of an ambulance to even do a a full turnaround demonstrates safety. A- and therefore, you know, I would be inclined to grant the waiver as it relates to this turnaround, because. I I don't perceive uh a safety risk associated with that, um, that specific aspect. Um, so tha- that's kind of where my, where my head's at, as it relates to this whole turnaround issue. Um, and uh, you know, more than happy to uh to further the conversation if anyone else has any other input.
Um, Matt, I have a comment, if you don't mind. Um, thank you, Attorney Mann, for the explanation. I I guess I, thinking about how this is, how, looking at the plan. And from nineteen twenty, correct? And thinking about the plan that's being proposed in front of us, I I I just really feel it's not the same plan. And the lots are not the same. I I I can't see how this would not. Need to um. I I I'm looking for the right word, sorry, it's just getting late, but I think the subdivision bylaws seem like they would apply, because it's not the same plan anymore. It's not the plan from nineteen twenty. It's a new plan with new lot lines and a new road, and I understand the road to the center, but I don't see this as. The same layout or same plan.
And it's, it's, believe it or not, the law's pretty clear, it doesn't have to be the same layout. And that was part of those, those were some of the cases I actually cited, so the locate, the layout for the road can alter. If it's going to be an improvement, which this is. Um, and as far as the actual lot lines, they are the same lot lines, because you look to the exterior. So they're a compilation plan, not a, you know, it's a compilation plan, it's not an aggregate of land that wasn't part of this subdivision. But an aggregation, so that's where it comes from, so the economic viability is retained. And in fact, if these people had had even sold further, and and believe it or not, if they were as small as a ten thousand square foot parcel. That didn't meet any of your standards, I could still build on them, because they're protected. Um, as legally existing non-conforming lots, if they were held in a certain manner. I I I do understand, though, it's a, it's like a confusing concept. You look at it, you're like, but you're moving the roadway, how can't that be? Well, because it's an improvement, we're not removing the roadway, because, you know, we like it better, we're moving it, because we're trying to avoid. You know, well, we're trying to make it a better layout and to preserve the economic viability of the land. I don't know if that helps, but that's why, and and the case law's pretty clear, you're allowed to relocate within the confines of this subdivision.
So if if this did carry further down Stark Ave, the the street that's not there. Um, it could encompass more, in the future, it could encompass more of those lots that from nineteen twenty. Um, here, here's part of. Understanding that if, as a board, we set a precedent with this for future lots that are running down there. Um, for an improvement to the street, or however it is, we, we don't have any type of um mechanism. That will allow us to. Like you mentioned. Not control, it's the wrong word, but make sure the the lot sizes and the street. Um, frontage and all that is as as required in our bylaws.
Unfortunately, you don't, because people have a right once they acquire, that's, I mean, that's. You ready? Real estate law one O one, it's, it is people's personal, I mean, not personal, real property rights. So, you know, I'd love to tell you that the people down the end of the road can't develop, I mean, they have more issues, because they have to cross a fairly decent wetland. Um, and they would have to cross it, and that would mean a bridge, because while you can't deny them. So, uh, and I apologize for being too pedantic, but when it comes to crossing a wetland, you're always entitled to do it, and it's called a limited project. And you can put a bridge in, but the issue is, you gotta, you have to put a bridge in.
Right.
It's an expensive process, and I'm not certain of who owns back there, or who would. Have the chutzpah to put a bridge in, because I I'm doing one now, it's, it's a million dollars to put in a bridge.
Well, um, just another question on this too, just to clarify, if it's not following any subdivision control law. Does it fall back into our um DPW town bylaws and everything for what the street should be? And.
Right, so it doesn't, so it doesn't, and I apologize if I, if I misspoke or misled anybody. You you, you do have the right under subdivision control to um regulate this. You just can't impose standards that deprive people of their economic right to develop this land. So you can't ask them to do more than what what exists currently on the road, unless you can demonstrate that there's an unbelievable harm. There isn't, these people live on the road, people live on twenty foot roads. Um, you know, you you look at that Ash toes standards, you look at, you know, the national fire protection standards, you look at all of these things, it's clear, it's fine. Um, it may not be preferable, but it's fine. Right, but we do have to comply with certain standards, so we have to meet stormwater management. We can't not meet that. We can. We cannot drain to our neighbor, we cannot drain and make the streets hazardous. We have to comply relative to what your, your bylaw standards are. So for example, yeah, you can't, you can't say to us today, well, you have to have a fifty-foot right of way and you have to make it a thirty-foot pavement width. That you'd never, you'd lose all day long because of what's there now, right? You have a forty-foot right of way you have to live with, you have twenty-four foot of pavement to connect.
Right.
But all of the other elements for ensuring proper construction so that we know it's safe. We know that the road's going to continue to be able to be plowed and used. So you know, the, the, and I'm not good at this, the, the layers of materials you need to make the road, we have to comply with. We aren't seeking waivers. So I, I don't want you to think you don't have that power because you absolutely do.
Okay.
So Bill, would, how do you feel about potentially granting this waiver for extension of this roadway over the?
I'm, I'm still not comfortable with it. I'm still not comfortable with granting it, no.
All right. Theo and Megan, you have any thoughts on this?
The, so I, I'm getting a little hung up on the, the reference to being the required constru- construction and financial cost for developing a connected road system being economically unfeasible. So I, I think hearing that, right, the property rights remain that, you know, the existing road is, you know, is you know, existing paper public ways, so that, so all of that makes sense, but it still does seem that. I'm not, yeah, I'm, I'm getting a little hung up on, on that. I'm sorry, I'm not able to express it. Doesn't it mean like in some ways that adding another four hundred feet makes this, makes a dead-end street more of a dead-end?
I could explain that too. So I think this will help. So you need to demonstrate how that is actually harmful and it's not safe. Once we show the turnaround and the fire chief says it's fine and we're sprinklering the homes even, it's safe. So the reason why people don't like dead ends is because the time period it takes for a fire vehicle to approach. And, and what happens if there's an impediment? What happens if, you know, something falls in the road? If you've ever seen these trucks, they get through almost anything. And if it falls in the road, it's highly unlikely it's going to fall thirteen hundred foot mark and not somewhere else. So it's, the conditions exist, it's a thirteen hundred foot road. You'd actually have to demonstrate how that extension is dangerous and harmful. You're adding three homes, those three homes are actually going to be sprinkled. You're going to provide a turnaround that actually will accommodate the fire vehicle, it will be paved. So it's the same turnaround, a four hundred foot difference doesn't make a difference to a, to a fire vehicle. Matter of fact, they can extend their hose five hundred foot. That's, that's, that's the requirement, right? When you have a fire hydrant, you have to have five hundred feet. So that's the type of thing that is the criteria. So when it says economically feasible or infeasible, it means, you know, you have to balance, you have to balance the weight of what the homeowner has, right? The property owner has with why you think it's unsafe. And if you can't come out and say that that home is unsafe, then the property owner's rights are, are prevalent. And this board, quite frankly, is not in a position to say no legally. That makes sense?
That does make sense. I think you could, can't you say, this is just for argument.
Please.
And I'm being a little uninformed here. Having thirty-two homes on thirteen hundred feet of roadway is actually an appropriate density. And therefore, the, it's actually the three homes that are farthest from the road are the most at risk and the most unsafe. So it is dangerous to those future homeowners to put them as far away from public safety. They're, they're more at risk, they're farther away than even the house number fifty-nine, as well as the house right at the very beginning of Stark Ave.
Of course you can say that, but it's anecdotal, you have no evidence to support it because your fire chief's saying that's not true. So.
No, the, I'm sorry, the fire chief's just saying, I can turn my truck around.
No, the fire chief's saying, oh no, he actually looks at the length of road and comments on it. Which is why he said, in my opinion, and I can't remember what I saw, it's some, it's, it was some email that if we sprinklers, he was fine. Because, look, you have to remember, the reason is time delay, okay? So what, what element enhances the time response for a fire vehicle? Those are sprinklers, because it actually, what's the word, suppresses, right? The fire. And again, you have a cut, if you have a hydrant at five hundred feet, firemen are absolute remarkable heroes. They do anything and everything necessary and they can have a hose that extends five hundred feet. And that's where the, where it ends, where the old roadway ends to the end. The homes aren't even that far and they'll be sprinkled. So you have to make, not an anecdotal, well, I think, you have to say, why? Why? And you'd say, well, time delay, well, we're putting in sprinklers, okay, that doesn't apply. Well, the fire truck can't turn around, yes, it can't. Well, the ambulance can't turn around, yes, it can, in one movement even. And what, you know, if, if, if an ambulance can get to thirteen hundred feet, I would venture to say it can get to the end of the four hundred feet quite easily. And, and there's so much evidence out there that length of road at thirteen hundred, fifteen hundred, nineteen hundred feet truly isn't a safety concern. Especially with current day methodologies, I sprinklers.
Yeah, but I, I do think the original logic of the, of the paper street not to be a cul-de-sac to be on a grid is, I think, part of the original basis for the plan, the layout and and public safety. So I, 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 I know it's a little anecdotal, but I mean, that, that's why it seems a little bit of a gray area to.
And this is the way Griswold does it all over the place. I mean, I don't know if you, you're familiar with him. He, he, everywhere, I'm telling you, everywhere, this is his exact layout. He takes the thin ones and makes these runs. And I understand that it was otherwise supposed to be a connected way. But you're, you have to take conditions also as they exist. And it's a cul-de-sac at thirteen hundred feet. So how is a cul-de-sac at thirteen hundred feet safe and a cul-de-sac at seventeen hundred unsafe? And you have to demonstrate that, like how?
Right, no, and I, I appreciate that you, you're not responsible for, once you start turning a paper street into a real street, that you've got to finish it all the way through the original extension of, of the, of the, the plan as, as it stands. So I, I appreciate the, the, the response, so.
No, the good questions, I mean, I, I think it's a good thing to get it all out and to have these discussions. Cause my guess is, is you're gonna have a lot more of these in, in Wakefield. I think you have a lot of paper streets, don't you?
I, I don't know that, but I'm a city planner and I like grids, so.
I do too, by the way. But.
All right, Megan. How do you, do you have any feeling on this? Because at some point, we're gonna have to vote on this, how you're leaning at this point, or?
Yeah, I, I guess I would say I have less concern in regards to the addition of the four hundred feet than I have more concerns in regards to the turnaround feasibility and safety. So.
All right. All right, so it looks like the issue with extending the roadway, the four hundred feet additional is, you know, obviously still subject, subject to potential improvements or, or not. And, and it would be granted, so, or potentially be granted. I was just looking through, so you said you are requesting a waiver to not have the, to not locate the trees, is that correct? Or?
Peter didn't remember if he put it on the plan, we were.
Hey, one second, Mr. Chairman. Addition number twenty, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
One second. Whoever did that, thank you.
It was Mr. Hogan.
Thanks, Mr. Hogan. Yes. And I, I believe what we said was, instead of installing them at fifty feet on both sides, that, you know, basically allow them to replace in areas that would not interfere with the low-impact drainage design. So I, I guess the point of that is we're willing to work with you and also listen to Mr. Spalding's suggestion. Maybe we can try to fit some of these things in someplace. I don't know that we can incorporate them into sidewalk, but we can look at it.
No, that, that's, that's for I, I'm talking for locating the trees on.
Oh, 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 I see what you're saying, I'm sorry, oh, locating the trees.
Yeah.
Oh, one second.
And, and the only reason why I, I'm on top of this is because this is gonna go to Concom.
Yeah.
And they're gonna request to have all those trees on that, especially within the twenty-five foot buffer shown. Because one of the things they look at is if you're opening up light exposure to areas that have not had that in years. So they're gonna want to see the trees, they want to see the canopy. So and I do know there's many trees from the end of Stark Ave to where you start that turn that are all gonna be taken out. And you're bordering the wetlands on both sides. So if you're looking to have a waiver on that, I just need to know because.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, it looks, it looks like either I didn't copy and paste it over. I, I think it was on the last set. I'm not sure, I didn't make it over onto this, but I'm just gonna make a note. And that's kind of why I have the caveat on there that we can.
But, but wait, I mean, Mr. Lowery has a good point. You know what we're gonna do tomorrow is we're gonna contact the Conservation Commission and, and discuss and find out, you know, what they would like to see. Because if they want us to identify the plans, it may just be we're looking for a limited waiver. Because we would be looking, excuse me, for a waiver from putting the trees in where it's in the middle of the right of way, which, which is far away. But if we do that, we would still need a partial waiver. But let us check with the Conservation Commission, because if we're gonna show them for them, because it's a requirement. Obviously, we would show them for this board on your plan.
Okay.
So Peter, let's just take care of that tomorrow, I think that's a good comment, Mr. Lowery.
And then you would be showing a limited work line all the way around all of these, or?
I believe I did, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, on the erosion and sedimentation control plan. I called it the proposed silt fence with mulch sock slash limited work line. Sheet eight of ten.
All right, so you've got it. So on, on the two southerly lots, you, you don't have a limited work line now, you've just got the, the wall line, correct?
The wall, the wall is the limit of work.
She just update the plan for that, Peter, then?
Listen, I, I can, I can add as much information as possible. But that was, you know, my understanding was, was, you know, that's the fifteen foot wide area. The wall is gonna kind of demarcate the limit of that area. We can, I can add, you know, it's kind of hard to have a silt fence and a mulch sock while you're building the wall. So I just, I didn't put it there. But I can certainly add it, just call that limited work line at face of wall or that wall construction, whatever.
You can't have a limited work in the, the face of a wall.
No, I, listen, it's, it's, it's getting late, I'm starting to just tell you that, that the idea was not to go past that wall.
I, I, I understand it's getting late, but, you know, we've been, again, we've been working, we've been reviewing this for over a hundred and twenty days now, and we're just finally getting to the details, which kind of get into weeds on a lot of, so if, if you're saying the wall is a limited work line, yet on your detail, you show the wall is gonna extend fifty percent to two-thirds back from that. If you've got eleven-foot wall, you, you're gonna potentially go back another five to ten feet, correct?
One second. Well, again, Mr. Chairman, that, that wall is, it's just a representation that there's gonna be a wall there. So I, it, it could be, it could be a reinforced concrete wall, I don't know, it could be a modular block wall, it could be.
Right, but I think, you know what, I think though, Pete, I just think we need to put a limited disturbance so the board knows. So whether it's one of those types of walls, we're gonna put it and we're gonna.
Absolutely, I'll, I'll add limited work line, I'm not, this, this really, this really no, I'm not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes, it's just, I, I showed the, I showed the silt fence dying into the end of the wall. I can certainly add another line there. I don't know what type of wall it's gonna be.
Okay, but I guess my point is, i- if, if you're showing trees on here that are gonna remain, they would be outside the limit of work line, is my point. You, you can't show trees that are on the other side of a wall, which is limited work line, but you need to excavate to build a ten-foot-high wall. And you need to, you know, go into that slope in order to shore that up. So you, you can't have it both ways, so we just need to.
Exactly, exactly, and I'm not, and we're not, and we're not, and I think we, what we mentioned at the last meeting was, we're gonna try to save as many trees as possible. So if there's a, if there's a tree that exists a foot back from a wall, I mean, you know, the tree's not gonna make it. If it's set ten fat, ten feet back from the wall, it, it will make it. So I will, I will adjust it and I can, I can certainly talk to the applicant about what type of wall he's thinking of building. You know, the wall, the wall can also maybe even be moved in in some places as well. So maybe instead of it being fifteen feet there, it's twenty feet, I, I don't know. We might have to just go out there and you might want to say, I want to save this tree, I'm gonna move the wall around a little bit.
Yeah, let's just talk to Scott about how we can, you know, really show the final detail of the wall, just so we can respect the limit of work line. That'd be great.
Exactly.
We'll do that.
Like I said, this, we're, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to cover as many bases as possible, there's ten thousand things on this plan. You're certainly gonna be able to find little things in here that probably don't look exactly right, but we're, we're trying to do our best.
All right. All right, so at this point, if no other board members have any, any questions. And I apologize to everyone, I know this is, is running pretty late, but this is a public hearing. So if anyone from the public would like to comment on the plans they've seen tonight, and in the comments that the board members or the applicants representatives have made, you're more than welcome to to speak up. Please use the, the raise your hand feature to make yourself known. And then tell us your name and your address. So I don't know if anyone has any comments at this point, questions? All right. I guess it's a little bit too late for most people, so.
I lost a few.
All right, so we're at the next steps here. We are gonna get the letter tomorrow for when you're gonna continue.
Absolutely.
Or give an extension for, when do you expect to have, to be back at this board for for the next presentation?
Sure, so Pete, when, did you have a chance to call Bill or note to see if we could set up that meeting? So we just go through the low impact to just be able to get any comments done?
No, I, I haven't had a chance to talk to him yet. So I'll, I'll try to reach out to him this week and see if we can set something up.
So maybe the best way is, is to work backwards. Mr. Lowery, what date would be the best date for you to receive, like, a week before a meeting, is that your deadline for delivery?
Yeah, it, it would, wow. The big deadline is, is the DPW, they need to get it with plenty of time.
That, if you want, Matt. Yeah, I think a week before or even further ahead of that would be much appreciated.
So when's the next meeting, Ms. Kikinda?
Let me check my calendar. So I don't think we're gonna be in December, right? Or the, in December again, right?
Well, that brings up a good question. Board, board members, this is between one holiday and the end of the new year, or the beginning of the new, end of this year, beginning of hopefully a better year next year. One holiday and the end of the new year or the beginning of the new, end of this year, beginning of hopefully a better year next year. So. Are people going to be around on the twenty-eighth for a meeting or is people not going to be available?
Man, I won't be available on the twenty eighth.
I won't either.
All right. We are not having a meeting on the twenty eighth. So our next meeting after that. Would be. January eleventh.
Yeah.
So Pete, do you think you, do you think Pete, if you met with Bill, you'd be able to speak with him and turn comments back to him? No later than, let's call it, January second?
Yeah, I think, I think that should be doable.
So, Mr. Lowery, what, you know, what Ms. Kikinda says is, you know, at least a week. So we're saying it would be, you know, nine days before we would get. Revisions back in and would have met with Mr. Renault so that the responses would be very relatable to what he was asking. So that you would assume that he won't have any lingering comments other than those that could be readily handled. So we could appear on the eleventh if that's acceptable to this board.
I believe. Looks like everyone's going to be available. Aaron, were you going to say something about that date or?
I was just going to say, so yeah, the holidays, but yeah, they said they could probably review it. Yeah, that's fine.
Do you think we need to go till the end of Jan? I mean, is that?
I mean, I have, I have, I have a public hearing. That night, unfortunately, at seven o'clock, I could certainly get all the information in.
Let's, what's the next, what's the next meeting in? So is it two weeks after January eleventh? So the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
That just, we just give this board more time and this draw note more time, Peter. I don't want to rush you. And then if it's, I didn't even think about them, it's Kikinda that I would then be asking the DPW through a very difficult time. It's busy and I get it the first of the year. So maybe the twenty-fifth is going to be better if that's, if the board members will be present.
Yeah, that would be our next meeting. I know I, I have something that I'm not guaranteed that I would be back for. I, my plan is to, to be back in. Time that evening, but I cannot be. You know, guaranteed of that, so. Was that Aaron?
I was going to say, Bill, can you be there? Yeah.
Yeah, I was nodding. I was on mute because.
If Mr. Lowery, if we did do that, would you be willing then to review the minutes of the meeting and still be a voting member? So that the next one, you just sign the Mullen affidavit and would continue to be present?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's always my concern. If a board member is willing to do that and you can't make something, then it's, we're not going to have a decision that night. As long as I know, then you're willing to do that. I don't have an issue as long as you don't.
No, I don't. It's much easier now that it's on Zoom, so it's all recorded, so I have, it works out well. So.
I agree.
Enough other members will be here, correct, that we have a quorum? Okay, for the twenty fifth.
Everybody else is there, okay. So then if we, I think that it sounds like the twenty fifth is going to be better for the board. And I think, you know, to Ms. Kikinda's point, better for the department heads. Everybody does need a little break at the holiday time, so I understand.
Oh, wait, sorry. I will not be here on the twenty fifth.
So. I mean, we'd still have, would Mr. Spalding, Mr. Newell, and Mr. Hogan be there? Then Ms.
Yeah, we have a forum. Yeah, we're good.
So Ms. Mansali, would you be willing to review and then do the Mullen affidavit and then appear at the next meeting to continue to be a voting member?
Yes, I'll be at the next meeting.
I, perfect. If the board members are good with that, we are, as long as, you know, we know that we'll continue to have the same voting members. We always like to do that.
I would, if we're going to have two members out. That leaves no room for. Any unintended issues to pop up with the other members. So. One thing, if we have planned one member being off. So I would say perhaps we need to. Skip to the first meeting in. February.
So that's the.
Or we go back to the eleventh, either one. Or. We try to have another meeting at a different time, different date. But. That gets into, people think of their calendars and it's kind of difficult, so.
I mean, I know that doesn't work a lot of times because then people have the conflicts. I mean. So when would, so when would be the meeting in February? That was February. What did we say? It was the eighth?
The February eighth. Which was, I earlier was suggesting for your extension to go far in advance because it.
Oh, we're going to, I would, I'm going to probably, with that, I'm probably going to extend till April.
Yeah.
So, I mean, Peter, look, if I may, I apologize for speaking to Peter like this. But Peter, I mean, I really would like to, before I come back to this board, I would like to resolve with Mr. Renault. I'd like to have all of the issues done. I'd like to show any changes we're going to make to the cul-de-sac, all access issues, all drainage. And if you think that we can do it by the eleventh and give true time for the board members to digest in. You know, DPW and engineering to review, fine. But if there's any likelihood that it's not going to happen, I would just far not want to waste people's time and I'd rather go to the eighth.
I mean, I, I'm pretty sure I can have everything resolved and back. To the board. I just don't know if I can appear January eleventh.
Yeah, all right, we're going to do February eighth. Everybody comfortable?
That's, that's, that's the only, that's the only problem. I mean, I'm not saying I necessarily have to be there, but if anyone has a question.
I, I think you do because it could, there may be questions relative to storm water. And I'm not, I'm not experienced to answer those questions. And I would rather the board be able to get answers from someone who's an expert. So I think I, good process, February eighth.
All right, so. We will continue the public hearing until. February eighth. Two thousand twenty-two, and we're going to call it at seven fifteen again.
Perfect.
All right.
And we will have all the answers to your questions that we've heard this evening. We'll have full revised plans and we'll have sign off. Knock on wood from Mr. Renault.
All right.
And in the meantime, if there's, if there's any other questions that anybody wants me to answer, please feel free to email me, call me, whatever you want, and I will.
Do that, but if you do have a question. Aaron can.
I meant to Aaron.
Yeah.
If there's anything I forgot or didn't touch on or something you want me to, then yes, please.
Okay. All right, so sounds good. Then we will see you. On. The eighth of February and.
Are you going, you just have to move it and vote, then we'll go?
Nothing to vote on. We're all set. We just need to extend the public hearing until then.
Oh, I thought you had, you usually vote to continue a hearing. You don't usually do that here?
No. No, we don't need to that, so.
Okay, so everybody have a wonderful holidays. We will see you on the eighth. Thank you very much for your time this evening and.
Thank you for hanging in. Thank you for hanging in there with us. Appreciate it.
Take care.
Bill, do you know who's hosting co-host anymore or I don't, I don't even know.
You're the host, Matt. You, please make me the co-host again, just in case.
If you really want it, sure.
I do.
Co-host, not host. There you go. All right. That was item. Sorry. All right, that was item three. Item four. Discussion questions, potential future Lake Business overlay district. I don't know if we really have a lot to talk about. Tonight on this. I know we had. Pushed it until tonight. Theo or Bill, did you have anything on this or?
I would like to speak up. Jim and I have been conversing and sharing some slides just to make sure they're in the right place. Meaning I had said that I would pull together slides with. The past presentation that we provided internally for our board and shared with the public where it was more of the locations on the lake and some of the main bullet points. Jim took that a whole step further and went into more detail. And we have two separate PowerPoints that we're working on. We haven't combined them yet. So I'd like to hear what Jim wants to say about it too, but I'm thinking that we need a little bit more time. But we, it would be good to get some feedback from the board, whether it's tonight or another time. Meaning we can hand those slides or pull it together more graphically. And then send it to the whole board for review. I'm open to both options.
Yeah, I think that, you know, Bill, what Bill put together probably looks a lot better than what I put together. But I think that the content is pretty much there to be and ready to be combined. What I'd advocate to do is to. Take both sets of slides, send them to Aaron and then send it to the rest of the board members. And then we can use a meeting where we're not starting the process at ten o'clock at night. To, you know, have everyone review what we've put together so far. And then, you know, try to, you know, Bill and I can continue to work on trying to merge the two presentations. But to get it in everyone's hands, have everyone kind of be able to look at it, get smart on it. And then we can talk about it and then set when we actually would want to have that public forum. You know, I think Bill did a great job of summarizing what we've done to date. And then the items I took a look at is trying to explain in a little bit more depth as it relates to the zoning law that we kind of alluded to at a number of these presentations and actually explain to the public what that consists of. And then summarizing what the high level takeaways were from Wakefield twenty thirty. So I think that if we send those two presentations to the board, the board members in their current state. So you, so we can get smart on it. And then Bill and I work on combining the two presentations in a separate working session. We can come together, you know, in a meeting or two. And I think we'll have a pretty good presentation to be able to engage more fully with the public.
Okay. Yeah, so is that? Aaron, can you handle? Distribution of that when? When Jim sends you that? All right, so we really don't have a lot to discuss tonight, then. Do you want to discuss this at our next meeting, which would be?
The eleventh?
The eleventh.
I think that's perfect, coming back off the holidays and something really good to. Work on and have, yeah, have some time to digest it.
Great.
All right, so we'll put this on the agenda item for. January eleventh to continue to discuss, so. All right. Item number five, planning board budget. Aaron, do you have that to pull up or do you want me to do it?
You don't mind pulling it up, that's fine.
Take a look. You know. Where I stored it. Give me one second to find it. All right, people can see that. All right. Aaron. Can you explain this at all or do you understand?
And so I talked to Kevin. Is there any way to zoom in a little bit? Sorry, my eyes are, I'm like thirty-four and I can't see. So. They did explain like before there was some money spent on like. You know, all the item stuff and all that. We've kind of added and pulled stuff from like the money that you like usually spend on like printing and all that. For a thing I, I call CoStar. So it's a real estate website that I use. It's really helpful to me. So I think that's a new thing. Sorry, my eyes are still really bad.
So is that where materials and supplies has?
Yeah, it has gone up. Yeah, and I think they took some money from other places. So I can like look up, you know, Edgewater, where places are vacant or other places in downtown. Things like that. So, yeah, I think they pulled money from other places to make kind of it. Even, I think, yeah, so.
Okay.
Our budget.
And then. As the board, board members look through this. I took a quick look and, yeah. Looks like a budget.
Pretty much the same, yeah. Yeah, I think the CoStar is really good to like improve our town and. Yeah. Sorry, if you guys have not seen this, I feel really bad.
All right, does anyone look at or want me to focus on a certain section of this or? You all set? Review, have previously reviewed it?
I'm fine with it.
I reviewed it. It doesn't look, is there any bombshells in there?
Yeah, all right. Do I hear a motion? To. Approve the. On a Wakefield Planning Board budget. For the fiscal period of two thousand twenty-three as presented.
They'll move.
Second.
Moved. Motion by Bill Spalding, seconded by Jim. Take a roll call vote. Theo, no?
Yes.
Megan Menasali?
Yes.
Jim Hogan?
Yes.
And Bill Spalding?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So. We approve the budget as. As presented. All right, thank you. So item. Six, Master Plan Advisory Committee. Aaron.
Yes, sorry, missed you earlier. So, yeah, we are looking for someone that would like to be the Master Plan Advisory Committee. Appointee, if anyone's in, like. So Town Council, we have Ann Danahy, but if anyone on this board would like to be part of that. Just the person that reports back to the planning board. You know, just the voice of reason because this is like behind the plane board. Sorry, it's so late. I'm so tired.
So basically, we're looking for a liaison, someone to. To attend the meetings. Now. The planning board will be eventually voting on this and approving it, so.
Yeah, the planning board, Town Council, yeah.
So hopefully we're not there to drive too much stuff. We're there to, you know, be part of the process, so. Someone would like to do that.
Question?
Yes.
Can we send more than one? Can there be more than one liaison? Meaning if more people on the board would like to attend.
I think as long as it's not quorum.
Right.
That's a tough one.
I, I thought that we were allowed to have, per the open meeting law, a quorum attendance, so long as we're on top, discussing planning board business.
I don't think so, but I can double check.
I. I kind of. Don't think it would be appropriate to have too many planning board members on there because then it would kind of look like we're driving. The, the process and we want this process to come from the people selected. The committee itself, so. Perhaps if we have. A permanent liaison and then have someone, another member, or to. Attend occasionally just to, you know. Also, you know, see the process. I think that would be appropriate, but having. Many members every time on there, I think, might not be appropriate. I'm not sure, or at least might give the appearance that. Since we're going to be approving it at some point, why are we the ones who's? You know, contributing to it, so.
Yeah, so Matt, I agree with that. Like if we can have one person that is the liaison and then someone that also joins or gives feedback or whatever, I. Or whatever, I think that's the best way to go about doing it.
Will these sessions be recorded?
Uh, I don't think the advisory are now, but the public meetings are.
Yeah, I, uh, this is something uh I'm really interested in, obviously, and uh I promised to. To be a quiet participant and uh and and be a good, good liaison, um but I also. Uh, really support, I think, the sort of everyone's inputs, so if someone else wants to do it too, I don't wanna.
I mean, we could also do like an alternating thing, right? At the public meetings or advisory, so we don't have a bunch of you at one time.
Yeah, all right, so who who is interested in being the liaison? Let's, let's, just short, short hands. Who who is interested in doing this? All right. What's my, you don't want, you don't feel like doing this? Okay, thank you.
I have no free time, let's be honest.
I don't have any free, no, I don't have any free time either, but.
All right, so we we need a a fair way to uh. I I don't want to go through people giving a ten-minute speech on why they feel they would be better.
I'm well, I'm willing to cede it to one of the other two members.
Well, what, why can't?
Well, Bill, you were on the Vision twenty thirty.
Understood. Does that mean I should be on this or I shouldn't be? So um, I was there on Vision twenty thirty and every other vision and vision. Revamp, revitalize committee as well. What if the option is how, this three of them, this three meetings?
Um, there's like four or five.
Okay, well, those three of us, we can split it up and divide and conquer. If that works too. Does it have to be the same person?
I I think it would be better to have a consistent liaison there. You know, using liaison as one person who report, you know, reports back or. So.
Right, well, um, I I I don't mind stepping back and allowing another member to be. I don't want to say engrossed, but experiencing that type of quorum and. Of that quorum, but that type of uh environment where um it's facilitated, I believe MAPC will be running. So I think it would be pretty good for another board member to have that experience since I've been on a bunch of them.
All right, so that, does that just leave Theo at this point or Jim, are you back in now and you want to fight it out or how do you, how do we want to handle this?
I'm, as long as, as long as you, I I can go to a couple of them and and not be a quiet member, um, I'm okay.
You know, I don't want to bring up this point, but you know, I I think, Jim, you have to be re-elected in April.
Yeah, that's a whole other thing.
Well, see, I think that the issue there is. The advisory committee has been selected, so they're the people that are be doing it, so. If you're gonna be there, I don't know if you can start putting, doing a lot of input. That's, that's, that's.
I was saying that more tongue-in-cheek. I'm fine with it being the person.
Yeah. All right.
Theo, it is.
All right.
Take good notes.
Theo, you'll, you'll be uh, you'll be reporting back to us. So.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Erin, is there anything you've already sent out the notices to people?
Yeah, no, I'll say, Theo, we sent the um, January fifth, uh, we're gonna meet seven to nine, I think. Um, our first advisory group meeting, um, and then after that, we're gonna schedule our public meetings, yeah.
All right, did you have anyone who was selected who then chose not to follow through or are they all, all the people that selected?
So far, I think everyone's going.
All right, excellent, awesome, well, that's good, so.
Yeah, I'm really excited about it.
All right. All right, so that's item number six, can move on to item seven, item's not anticipated, so uh I spoke earlier of a few things. That uh did not get on the agenda, so um. We are not having a meeting the twenty-eighth. So our next meeting is gonna be the eleventh. We're gonna have the Lake Business District questions on there. I know there's, there's one other thing. We got a letter from Mr. Lou about uh potentially coming, you know. He has a, we're gonna, his public hearing on his zoning change has. Um, the next date is going to be the twenty-fifth. So um, I'm gonna, I may or may not be here for that meeting. Basically. What's gonna happen is we're gonna have to close that public hearing. If he wants that amendment. To appear on spring town meeting, it needs to be refiled. And I believe we need to have another public hearing at some point, so it's gonna be a formality, but um. We will basically talk through the issues that we had discussed on our last public hearing, see if anyone has an input and then move on from there. So that's one issue. He contacted the board uh about. Coming back to try to get. Basically, a a waiver to present his um. To go back to the ZBA to apply for another variance. Um, I need to check to see, I believe, because we did not vote on that. And it may have been two years ago now. I'm not sure. I need to check.
Uh, my recollection is the ZBA meeting was in June, not quite, this June will be two years.
Okay, so uh we just need to look at that and see when that actual date was to see if. If two years has elapsed since we. Since, you know, since that meeting that he was denied his uh, his variance, so.
But just, Matt, just to be clear, so when I do look, it's um, the Zero Cherry Lane. Variance decision. Yeah, I I do have um a folder with all this information in it. What um, what data are we actually looking for? Are we looking for when the ZBA? Denied it? The rescinded decision by the ZBA?
I believe so, because he could not reapply for two years after that, but again, I need to confirm this.
Right, the rescinded decision. And and would this also be? Should I read it or should we not discuss it now?
No, I just want to know. Need to, and we don't need to decide now, we just need to decide if we can even take this up yet, if if it hasn't been two years. He want, he he requested to show up at our next meet, he actually requested to show up at tonight's meeting, but I said it wasn't on the agenda, so we could not do that. He's requesting to show up at our next meeting. Uh, I just need to check to see if if we can even pick up this issue. We we may put him on the agenda and then find out that we can't do anything for another, you know, four months. And so be it, so, but I'll look into that. I'll reach out to Mr. Lou and um potentially he'll be on the agenda for. Our meeting of the eleventh, potentially, I'm not sure, so. And besides that, I don't think anything else at this point. I'm a little bit tired. I'm sure everyone else is, so. Does anyone else have any items that they want to discuss at this point?
I do have one quick follow-up and it's um, at the last meeting, I said I would contact Erin and. Stephen Mayo and Sherry, just to find out what is the possibility of a hybrid meeting. Not that we need to have it now, but the, on the, and the understanding of inclusion and people who might not have internet access that would be there in person. So the second floor con- from Mr. Mayo, the second floor conference room should be completed this week. For um a big screen monitor with the HDMI connection and having that type of hybrid where people could be. Um, in person and it could be a Zoom meeting. The first floor room is gonna take a lot longer because all that equipment needs to be replaced or even added because there isn't any equipment. So the first floor needs all new equipment. Mr. Mayo did say that he doesn't envision in-person hybrid meetings, um with the exception of the Town Council and School Committee at WCAT. In the near future, um, but they are preparing for it, so I just wanted to report back on that. I don't know if Erin has anything else to add to that, but I think that sums it up.
No, I think um, as COVID cases rate, like kind of go up, I think we're all just trying to be as safe as we can, so that's the only thing I'll say.
All right, thanks, Bill. Um, all right, if no one else says anything else at this point. Item number eight, adjournment, adjournment, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Theo. Someone's gonna second it.
Second.
All right, thank you, Jim. Jim seconded it. Okay, uh, we'll call vote, uh, Bill Spalding.
Yes.
Megan Menasali?
Yes.
Jim Hogan?
Yes.
Theo Noel?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Susan and Erin, thank you very much.
Very much so.
We will next meet uh next year. Everyone have a happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
We will see you uh in uh twenty twenty-two, hopefully it's a a better year than this year.